Check. There we go. All right. Good evening, everybody. We are going to call a special meeting to order of the Town of Truckee Town Council at 5:45 PM. Judy's going to note, roll call. Thank you. We're going to defer the Pledge of Allegiance to our regular meeting in about 15 or 20 minutes from now. Going to open public comment for anything not on this agenda, if there's anything, any public comment. Seeing none, closing public comments. And head right into item 5.1, Declaration of Local Emergency Regarding COVID-19 Virus.
I'm going to be extremely brief and then let Andy take over, and both of us will, I think, be brief. The reason we're bringing this forward to you, and the reason we're bringing it forward to you as a special item, is that we won't meet again for two weeks, and things are moving extremely fast, if not light speed, in terms of what other jurisdictions are doing and the kind of things that we're finding in terms of information. We want to make it absolutely clear to both council, community, anyone listening, that we don't feel it is a true emergency in the sense of, we don't want to panic anyone, we don't want to cause any hysteria, we don't want to over-blow this idea. But we believe it is prudent to recognize that this epidemic pandemic, whatever you want to call it, is real. It's out there. It's coming. There are currently zero cases known in Nevada County. There are seven in Placer County. But of course, it's early, and there's not been a lot of testing. So what we're bringing forward is largely an administrative and a precautionary move. We have no interest and don't believe this precautionary move should, again, cause fear or cause people to panic, or not come to Truckee, or not come to the region. But we think it is prudent to do this, the primary reason being that it then gives us the ability to get financial resources and other things as we need it from state and feds and others. So Andy, you want to add?
The only other thing I'll add is that our municipal code allows either the council or the town manager to declare an emergency. So if the council does not wish to declare a local emergency at this time, perfectly fine, and Jeff would have that authority under the municipal code to do that at some point if he deems it necessary, and then the council would be asked to ratify that at its next meeting. So, as Jeff said, it's not urgent. Don't have to take action tonight. It's entirely up to you as to whether you think that this is called for. We should point out that the county of Nevada has declared emergency already, and we understand that Grass Valley and Nevada City either already have or will be shortly. So if you do decide to declare a local emergency, it would be kind of following the footsteps of our sister public entities around the county.
Blaster County has as well, and we have Bob Womack here, who is kind of our resident expert in declarations and proclamations of this sort, and what they mean. And the one thing that I'm learning very steeply every day what all this is about, but the one thing we did find out is that, should we declare an emergency, whether I do it, whether the council does it, when we do it, every 14 days, we have to renew it. So we have to keep tabs on exactly what's going on, status update, and literally that would mean every council meeting if we're in that situation. We're not going to get into all the things we are currently doing as a staff to try to keep people apprised, keep our staff safe, keep working. That's a whole different subject matter, but we'll bring that to you if you want a different date.
But there is a lot being done, just to clarify. We've seen a lot of communications, maybe just to clarify, there's been a lot of communication regarding it so far.
Yeah, and some actions, no real, I don't know what you call it, you know, significant ones in terms of closures and that sort of thing, but a lot of small things. In fact, this room has been sterilized very recently, has every surface and town hall every evening.
Great. Thank you. Bring it back to council for any questions, maybe starting at that end.
What sort of resources would this declaration open the door to? I mean specifically, you know, what would it mean for the town if we were to do this and we needed assistance down the road?
Our understanding is that if federal and state disaster funds become available to reimburse the town, which is always how it works, it's always on a reimbursement basis, we would be eligible for those only if an emergency has been declared. But I should point out that at this point, we haven't particularly spent any money on dealing with this, so we don't have anything to be reimbursed for just yet. The other thing is that, under our municipal code, there's a chapter that deals with emergencies and disasters, and it says that if an emergency has been declared, the town manager has somewhat more leeway and more authority to do things without having to come back to council than he otherwise would. And I don't think that Jeff has any intention of doing a bunch of crazy stuff if the council declares an emergency, and as I said before, he could declare one if necessary himself. But that's the other substantive change. So we would have access theoretically to state and federal disaster funding if there isn't available and if we've spent money, and we would be poised to act quickly without the necessity of Jeff having to declare an emergency himself if that becomes advisable.
Okay. Last question, what is the overlap with the state of California having already declared an emergency and then Nevada County having declared an emergency? It seems like geographically, we clearly fall within those realms.
We clearly do, but for purposes of being able to access state or federal disaster funding, we would have to declare our own. We would not be covered by either the state or the county declarations.
And it depends a little bit on the funding source. This is where the learning curve is still, we're still learning, but different funding opportunities might, we might not be available if we didn't do our own. Some, we may, you know, because we are part of Nevada County, of course, so. But we've been advised by Nevada County, by Placer County, that it makes a lot of sense for us to also declare, so it's our state, county, city.
Thank you.
So I understand that declaring the state of emergency frees up access to federal or state disaster funds. What would we need those funds for, or what would we be reimbursed for? Like, what is the expense that would be associated?
I may let Rob and Bob speak to that to date. All it's been is a lot of cleaning supplies.
So it's a preventative measure? We don't know the answer to that. Truthfully, and hopefully, we don't need the funding for anything because nothing significant happens here. A generic example, and probably the low-line fruit that I could pick at, is through some kind of exposure, with 15 people assigned to patrol, 10 of them become exposed or ill, and we have a significant staffing shortage that prevents us from delivering law enforcement services to the town of Truckee. We would ask for mutual aid from other organizations. That mutual aid would need to be paid back. This emergency proclamation would allow us to seek the funding to pay back those agencies that gave us mutual aid. That's, again, a generic one, but probably, more than likely, something would happen.
Or overtime for our own staff, if that became necessary.
Overtime for our own staff if we need to fill those voids. And then if, God forbid, we did have some kind of large-scale issue, we needed to help out allied agencies with our own staffing, our own logistical challenges, all that funding could be paid back through federal and state resources.
Okay.
Yet to be determined, I think is probably the short answer to your question.
Right. No, and it makes sense. It's actually really helpful for me. Thank you. So, do we have to have already declared, in the event that you have 15 people on patrol and 10 of them fall ill, do we already have to have had the state of emergency declared prior to that event, or can you, would it be possible for you to call Jeff and say, "Gosh, we have 10 sick people. We need to declare a state of emergency. We need to call in help"? Like, how does that timeline work?
Yeah, it's, so don't confuse the funding with the staffing. The staffing would be provided to us. I mean, we have enough close partnerships with not only agencies in our county, but Placer County as well, CHP. We're going to get people to come and help us out. It's the reimbursement of the funding that allows it. I think in trying to analyze this and break it down, hopefully this answers some of the questions for other council members that haven't gotten yet. The balance here is operational efficiency versus perception, right? And so the perception and the concern is that by declaring a state of emergency, we're overstating the situation in Truckee. We might alarm the visiting populace or our residents to the fact that there's a bigger problem here than there truly is. So that's the perception, and the operational efficiency is absolutely in line with what the county and other agencies and frankly, other cities are doing in the state of California. So from an operational efficiency perspective, my recommendation is we declare the state of emergency. From a perception perspective, that's what you all have to weigh in on.
Jessica, though, my understanding is you can't bill in arrears, in effect. So if a bunch of expenses happened prior to declaration, we might have a problem. We might be covered by county. That's where the, depends on the funding source.
Okay, yeah, that was my, I guess the question is where to be qualified for that reimbursement?
It's a kind of a risk versus prudence question that we're addressing.
Okay.
Councilmember commendatory. Any questions?
No, I don't think I have any other questions right now.
Is there an issue with the funding in terms of first come, first served? So if we don't do this before somebody else, is there any risk to us?
You know, the funding sources are all different, but in general, I would say no, there's not a risk. Because among other things, I don't think that a lot of agencies have had significant expenditures yet, and if there were to be a shortage of emergency funds available, it might go, they might potentially be allocated based on either the total amount spent or the date that they were spent. But I don't think that we're starting to see a race between cities and counties having to spend a lot of money just yet, at least not in California. So I don't think, it's a long-winded way of saying that I don't think that not declaring an emergency tonight would put us at a disadvantage, if that's the question.
Okay. And then, we're already seeing a lot of things being canceled, gatherings and whatnot. So I wonder how this either informs more of those, or if we don't do it, does that inform possibly fewer of those?
Maybe I'll take that one. It really isn't related. The whether or not we would cancel, for example, town events, is a separate decision. We could do that whether we had a declaration or not. We could do it just for, you know, just to be safe, or not. You're right, there are a lot of organizations canceling things or trying to, you know, trying to not have public gatherings. We have been talking about that and probably a dozen other things we might do, including, you know, staff working from home, and if schools, if the schools would close, you know, what we do. So we're having lots of contingency conversations so far. None of that is anything we're planning to do. Tomorrow morning, we're going to be spending a couple of hours with the whole department head team, kind of going over the first few of those that seem the most logical and easy to not influence business. But we could, or, you know, do the closures or not, just depending on, you know, what we believe is to be the most important activity. I think if you, if council wishes, I can provide to you kind of a list of where we are and where we're headed, you know, a couple of days from now, probably.
Yeah, you and I have discussed that, of just kind of, what's the first trigger? What is the trigger, and then what happens? So kind of like level-one response, level-two response, level-three response, I think, would be really informative for all of us and for the community. And then I wonder, you kind of led into it there, this decision to declare a state of emergency, how does that impact other institutions like the school? Are they going to be under pressure to make changes based on our decision to do a state of an emergency?
Our decision doesn't have any legal impact on the school or any other agency, as far as I'm aware. If the question is, would that put them under pressure in the court of public opinion? I don't know. Simply can't say.
Thank you. I think.
Yeah, I'll just add that, in all the research and all the conversations I've been part of, the town has done this before. We had a significant rainstorm a few years back and created some infrastructure issues that we declared a state of emergency to get access to FEMA funding. If we rename this document, a memorandum of understanding to obtain logistical and operational funding from state and federal resources, that's exactly what we're doing.
You got a deal. Yeah.
Right? So what-
That's way easier to say yes to.
The stigma of declaring an emergency is where this becomes problematic, and that's all in how we phrase that and how we explain it to our community. But the fact is, this is an operational red tape for funding and logistical support if we need it.
That will be publicized widely. Yeah.
Strategically publicized widely.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions? Anybody, any other questions? Quickly. No? I'm going to open this agenda item to public comment. Anybody wishing to address this item, come on up, please.
I think the mic's on. Hi, Joan, Direct Jones, Citizen. I was curious, because I don't know the answer to this, in moving forward as events come up or get, are asked for permitting, obviously, we have a special events permit that we would be looking at, but who in town really does have the jurisdiction to decide what events will be held and what events wouldn't be held? Because we have so many special districts, you know, we don't have, you know, the overarching government structure, so I'm curious how that would play out.
Thanks, Joan. We'll get an answer to that in a second when we close public comments. Any other public comment on this item?
Good evening. Colleen Dalton, Director of Tourism and Economic Programs. This discussion was actually very helpful. Thank you, council and staff. This sounds inevitable. It's just the timing that is of a concern, and I like Chief Leff which's MOU description. We sure wish it could go down that way. But realistically, what is the communication plan? Is there a plan for this? We all know things can be taken out of context, in the press, that will certainly pick this up tonight. So I just wanted to read to you something I've prepared that just gives you a little bit of a sense of what's going on out there in our world. While this declaration is being considered, Visit Truckee is hearing about group cancellations, event cancellations, and cancellations from travelers who do not want to fly. We are talking well over $100,000 in lost revenue in the next few weeks alone, as reported by just one hotel and one property manager. So we're probably talking a million for the month of March. Last Friday, Visit California held a conference call that provided a framework for an effective visitor communications response, given the facts. Visit California will continue its welcoming message with a strong overlay of how to travel safely, as will Visit Truckee. In this time of great uncertainty, anxiety for travelers, it is more important than ever that Truckee's brand is welcoming, targeting the drive market. The flight market is gone. Visit Truckee now reaches 72,000 on social media, 38,000 in email subscribers, and 30,000 per people per month on truckee.com. We are amplifying Truckee's greatest strengths. Truckee is a mountain refuge, a retreat from the city. We offer fresh mountain air, lack of crowds, access to open space, oxygen-rich forests, spring skiing, calm in nature, empty trails with budding flowers, outdoor dining, virtual working and virtual studying. Please take time to fully evaluate the benefits, the timing, and costs of this decision. Please consider Visit Truckee's audience and partner with us. Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen. Anybody else? Jim? And could all speakers tonight, both at this special meeting and also at our following meeting, please fill out speaker cards, which are on the back table. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I submitted public comment via email, and I just want to make sure that everyone received that.
We did.
There's a lot of nodding. Thank you.
Everybody read it. Yeah, good. Just making sure. It all comes in quick. We've got a lot of paper to get through. Okay, seeing no other public comment on this agenda item, I am going to close public comments. And maybe Jeff or chief, mind giving us an answer to what Joan brought up, if, you know, who kind of governs the big special event permit?
Yep. So it really just depends on the special event. So if we are giving a special event permit, then it's the town, and we have a procedure for doing that. And I think it's been actually brought before this council, and we can condition events, we can say yes or no to events for a variety of appropriate findings. If it is a town event, town-sponsored event, an event here that we're allowing or encouraging or even renting out, you know, this space or others, we can obviously say yes or no to those events. So those are ones that are totally in the town control. After that, we have zero control. We may have influence, or, as Andy described it, you know, there may be some pressure put on if everyone's canceling events and someone isn't, but we would have, you know, we can't tell another agency, Wrenckin Park, you can't do a, you know, a study or workshop or a meeting.
Great. Thank you. Okay, with that, let's bring it back to council. Our goal here, if we are going to have extended discussion, as in more than about 15 or 20 minutes, I might table that to the end, just so we get back to our regular meeting at 6:00. If we think we can get through this in the next under 20 minutes, then let's proceed and maybe let's take a crack at it and see how far we get, and if we need to table it till the end of the agenda, we can choose to do that, just so everybody's on the same page, just because we also sprung this meeting late. And for anybody who walked in late, we did start at 5:45 on a special agenda item. So with that, does anybody want to start? Looking around, would you like me to? No? Jessica, go ahead.
I'll start, but I don't have a specific opinion yet. I'll share my thoughts so far. I'm really torn on this one, because I feel like the message it sends by declaring a state of emergency is, we're in a state of emergency. And so I feel like that can be received either two ways. One, this is a really important, serious concern and issue, and we're not taking it lightly. Or two, we're really kind of jumping the gun. There hasn't been a case of coronavirus in Nevada County yet, correct? So I really, I understand that it's, the bottom line is it's really logistical to open up funding in the event that we need funding, but I'm concerned about, really about going either direction, and I don't know enough, I know that it's, I know how it's going to be seen, and I don't know enough about the seriousness of it all, to feel really set one way or another. And Jim, I appreciate the comments that you sent in, because it was really helpful to kind of provide, to provide that insight, so. But now I'm pretty stuck, so. That's where, that's kind of where I'm coming from, if that makes sense.
Yeah, great.
First of all, I appreciate the comments, Colleen and Jim, and the question from Joan as well. As I look at this, we are in a state that declared a state of emergency, so we're in California, and the entire state is under a state of emergency, and I think that was primarily to access, to have the ability to quickly access funds. Nevada County has followed suit. The underlying issue here is a public health issue, and I think it's important for us to be proactive about that, even if the virus has not manifested itself in Truckee that we know of. I think it's inevitable, and I think it is wise and prudent to have access to resources quickly. The travel impacts are already happening nationwide, worldwide. We heard the example of cancellations happening even before this evening, the last several days. So from my perspective, I think it's important to be proactive, to get in front of this, to be prepared, to have the resources aligned if we need them, and if we don't, great. I appreciate the true description that the chief offered of what this really is, and I also agree that it's going to be important to think about how this is communicated, that we do a good job in terms of our public relations, communicating what this really is. But I think we want to be ahead of the curve when we're dealing with a worldwide public health issue that, again, is going to inevitably arrive.
Thank you.
Councilmember commendatory.
I think, kind of where I stand on this whole thing is, obviously, from a, I think Jessica's point, or what's the emergency, obviously, the perception of emergency, but nothing's really happened yet, so to declare a state of emergency seems a little premature. But in really thinking, pulling it away, what's our responsibility, following David's comments, our responsibility is to the community and setting ourselves up for success should something go awry. It's conservative thinking. It's really kind of pulling back, but I think it's probably the, it's hard for me to say, that's probably the right thing to do, is to declare a state of emergency, even though it goes against all my personal beliefs of, you know what, we should just be messaging the message of, hey, things are good, be smart, be prudent, do the things you need to do, take care of yourself. But from a governmental side of it, it probably makes sense, particularly in the chief's words and how laying it out that way as a bureaucratic method to get to where we, be prepared to be where we need to be if things should ever go sour. So I'm kind of standing on that side right now.
I actually was pretty surprised, you know, Nevada County and all these other municipalities have declared a state of emergency prior to even a case coming to that region, but as this has been made clear by the communications from staff, it is not a question of if, it is a question of when. And given that the entire country of Italy is on lockdown because of this virus, I think it is clear that it's also not a case of if, but when there's a financial impact to our community. I would hope that by being proactive rather than reactive, we can hopefully mitigate that and show the community and our visitors that their health is of the utmost importance, their well-being is of the utmost importance. This, it is really surprising, like I started with, it's strange to me to be doing this so early, but given what we're seeing happening around the world, I agree. I think we need to go forward with this and be as proactive as possible in order to minimize the impacts to our community and our visitors.
So maybe I'll just try to, so I agree with everything that's been said, first of all, and I appreciate all the questions, and I very much appreciate staff being proactive and bringing this to us in a timely manner. I think it's an incredibly serious issue, and we all, you know, there's this unknown fear that I think really exists out there, and, you know, the hysteria and the panic that's been played, you know, through the media, you know, is very real in a lot of places, and we're just all really lucky to be where we are and be in this great place that we call home. And we have a responsibility up here, for sure, to look out for that. So I want to be very clear that the recognition of all of that is very real, and I take it extremely seriously, in addition to our responsibility. I'd like to maybe put out a compromise here, because I think that there are some pretty, there's some pretty inevitable next steps, both positive and negative, and I appreciate the chief for his bluntness at all times with us, and he pretty much nailed it on the head. You know, there will be questions, there will be scenarios that we are going to have to answer, whether it's as soon as tonight or first thing tomorrow morning. So based on also what Andy said, that we were going to have to review this every 14 days regardless of any action that we, or I guess, in the event we take action, we have to deal with it every 14 days. You know, my preference would be that we give ourselves a week or two to come up with a communications plan, to actually have some messaging of why we're taking this action. I haven't seen anything yet that allows us to kind of get ahead of this, rather it's us being up here right now, taking action, and then we're going to have a quick trickle, if not deluge, of inquiries as to, you know- if not deluge of inquiries as to, you know, okay, this just happened in Little Truckee, California, everybody should be taking notice type of thing. So I have some concerns about that. So my preference would be, and it sounds like I'm slightly in the minority, so potentially looking for somebody else to see if they agree with this idea, is, you know, Jeff already has the authority to declare an emergency should we so need to. But revisit this at our next council meeting, absolutely, with a little bit more of a dialed-in communications plan that also involves our visitor constituency, which is big. The timing of this being right now in March, we have just a few more weeks of the winter season for a significant portion of our business community that rely on tourism. And I think it's important to, you know, I think you can see it both ways. It's yes, we're absolutely taking care of our community, or we're identifying, you know, an issue and we're getting ahead of it. And I just don't know how that plays out without us framing the actual conversation. I think you nailed the framing. We're taking care of our community. I think that's super important. But I don't think we have that language ready to go at 8:00 AM tomorrow morning when we're going to have to do this. So, you know, so I'm kind of looking at it from both ways, sort of hit pause tonight, but make sure that this is right back in front of us at our next council meeting. And if something needs to be done sooner, you know, the ability is there to have it take place sooner.
Well, I'll say, I didn't say it before, but actually, your thought is kind of where I was finding a compromise in my own mind. If Jeff has the ability, and he does, to declare, should it need to be declared in the next few days and whatever timeline. A little bit of earthquake, yeah, how about that?
Yeah.
We could change that resolution real quick.
I didn't realize my words were so powerful. So I would say, where was my thought there? Oh, so going back to what we were just talking about, that messaging is obviously very, very important, and doing the right thing to have, to set ourselves up for success on both fronts is very, very important. And that could be a good compromise, where we, in a sense, hit pause here for tonight, work on some messaging should the need arise in the next few days, let the things kind of unfold a bit here. And that gives the town manager the ability to declare it should it need to be done. And we come back in two weeks and substantiate it or whatever.
It's a no-brainer.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be okay with that. I think that's a fair way to go. But I think the messaging's most important part of that, whatever way it looks at.
So, does anybody else like said compromise? Or would somebody like to proceed with a motion on their, on the primary motion?
I would just like to offer some comments to that. You know, and this may be very rare for somebody in a government position or kind of a political position not to care about perception in this instance. I think from my perspective, again, this is an administrative matter addressing a public health issue that is surrounding us and facing us now. I think, I don't think it would take very long to work on a press release to get it out, to get the messaging out as soon as tomorrow. I don't, you know, waiting another week or a couple of weeks because of the concern about perception or messaging, to me, is sending the wrong message. And again, I think in the instance and matter of public health, it's important to be proactive. And so I support going forward with the declaration. If I end up being in the minority, then so be it. We'll go with the compromise. But I think this is important enough to position ourselves to have access to funding right away if we need it.
Okay. I agree. I think you had a really good point, that the state of California has already declared a state of emergency, that it's our job to take care of our community. And it might, it's hard to know what's hype and what's not. And I'm not a professional in this, in the coronavirus whatsoever. But if taking care of our community is making a declaration that's going to open up funding that chances are we're going to end up needing, and if it's really just a matter of time, then why not be proactive about it? And then what we need to be controlling is the message that we're sending out in the communications that, yes, this is administrative, and it's not a state of emergency in Truckee. You can still come and ski and enjoy the trails and enjoy the budding flowers and the spring snow. It's still a safe place to visit, but we're going to take care of our community by opening up access to that funding should we need it. My concern in waiting two weeks is that, I mean, how long ago did we hear about coronavirus? Has it even been two weeks? It moves that quickly? That, I mean, I would be hesitant, I would be much more comfortable in just giving the reins to Jeff and saying, wait three or four days. But being proactive, yeah, what's the point in waiting if we can just do it now?
Well, it gives us a time to craft a realistic message to get out because, as we just heard, there's nothing that's going to change tomorrow in our operations. Is that an accurate statement? Our operations are not going to change tomorrow should we do this?
Correct.
So that's all it is. But, so just to make sure you're aware. So it sounds like if there's consensus, you know, I'd be happy to hear a motion. Otherwise, you know, I made myself clear in terms of, I take it incredibly seriously. I just want to buy us a little bit of time.
Question for Jeff, how quickly can a press release, or is there one already prepared? Could something go out tomorrow that sends the right kind of a message?
There isn't one already prepared. Probably we should have done that, but this came upon us rather suddenly as well, the same surprise that Vice Mayor Clovis had had, I had as well, when he found out all the other jurisdictions were well ahead of us. But it won't take us long. So probably by midday tomorrow, we can have some messaging prepared and ready. It may take a little bit longer than that. So we can get initial messaging out. That shouldn't be difficult either way, whether, you know, you delay a bit or not. The one question I would ask, well, I think I'd rather have, you guys vote, and then I'll, depending on what you vote, I have a question. Because what I'm interested in, if we are going to delay, I'd like to know a little bit of direction from council, what it is, what sort of trigger would you think it's the time? In other words, if now isn't the time, you know, kind of what, is it, you know, once we get a communications plan in place, then we bring it back to you? So depending on how you vote, it would help us a good bit because, as you might guess, we're being inundated with information, some of which you, you know, you have to deal with some, which you don't, and it takes an awful lot of time. So that'd help.
Yeah, and I don't see that going away. The information is forthcoming, it's been forthcoming. We've, you've been sending us emails, so we've been aware really proactively, and I think we all appreciate that. So, you know, to me, just to be clear, you know, a communication plan's important. I have no doubt about the seriousness of this, but seeing as nothing will operationally change again tomorrow, it behooves us to get the messaging right, to work with our partners, to make sure that we frame it in a way that makes sense and isn't just a sort of a, yep, council took this action last night, and this is what happened, and that's sort of our, that's the MO that we have, that, you know, when I think of a press release that they're going to get done by noon tomorrow, it's going to be pretty vanilla, right? It's going to be, this is what happened. It's not going to have commentary, it's not going to have color, it's not going to have all of the things that we talk about that necessarily, you know, we're trying to get across as we're looking out for our community and trying to make the best choices. So, you know, I'm not going to die on this sword. If this is where everybody wants to go, let's do that.
Let me ask one more question.
Of course.
So Jeff, you have the ability to declare a state of emergency, but we have to ratify it within seven days.
Yeah, I'm not sure for us it's seven days. The information we got from, I believe it was the Nevada County, is they have to do it in seven days. Andy, do you know if we have a timeframe? I know you have to ratify it.
The next meeting, but let me see if there's a specific deadline, just give me a second.
Give it a second. It's there, huh?
Jeff, it's seven days.
It is, Bob, thank you.
We would have to special set if we don't have a meeting.
Yeah, and honestly, that as a practical matter, that is one of the reasons we, you know, jumped the gun perhaps a little bit and put it on this agenda, is that we sort of did the calculation thinking, well, if I was to ratify it, say, you know, tomorrow, we have to, declare, we have to have a special meeting, you know, six and a half days later. And special meetings are very difficult to have, to get all of us together.
And that's my question is, so say something radically does change tomorrow, we find out we do have a confirmed case in the town of Truckee, and you decide that that is the trigger, that we should declare a state of emergency, then that's only good for the next seven days, and we don't have another council meeting for 14 days.
Right.
So that leaves us, what happens in that dead zone?
We'd have a special meeting.
Okay.
I mean, assuming six-plus days later, it still makes sense, which obviously it probably would, we'd have a special meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So let's bring this to some type of conclusion. Would anybody like to make a motion? If not, I will.
I'll make a motion that we declare a local emergency regarding COVID-19 virus and follow up with a press release or some kind of communication plan within the next day.
I second.
Judy, your roll call, please.
Councilmember Commendatory?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clovis?
Yes.
Mayor Polley?
No.
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierman?
Yes.
Thank you, I have four to one.
Great. So we'll bring back a communications plan, we'll get that information back to you quickly. We'll probably have a very, as Mayor Polley described, a fairly simple initial release, a little bit more than just what you voted on. But we will not have had a chance to touch base with all of our partners and talk to the chamber and talk to visitor folks and all that. But then we'll kind of work through those nuances, and we'll have that in the plan.
Great.
I have a quick question. Does it have to be called a state of emergency, or can we call it the memorandum of release of funding from?
Don't ever take advice from your police chief on these types of issues. That's lesson number one for tonight. No, that was for the sake of clarification on what this is going to accomplish. And frankly, I'd like to think my writing skills a little bit more than, did you say vanilla or milky toast, Mayor? I can't remember which one you used.
I said vanilla, chief, yes.
So I'll try and do better than vanilla. I'll sprinkle some colorful sprouts in there, the little sprinkles in the ice cream. But I'll be able to have this written by the end of this meeting. I'll forward it on to our marketing committee, they'll review it, take some of the cop language out. We should be able to have something out by mid-morning. So I don't, it will have plenty of explanation. It will be called declaring it an emergency, but it will clearly state, this follows the protocols and guidelines for other municipalities, the county, the state, and exactly what we hope to accomplish. So it'll tell the story.
Great. Thank you. With that, special meeting adjourned. Coming back, regular meeting, March 10th. Call to order. Judy.
Councilmember Commendatory?
Here.
Vice Mayor Clovis?
Here.
Mayor Polley?
Here.
Councilmember Abrams?
Here.
Councilmember Tierman?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we could all rise and join former Mayor D., no, we'll help you out, Carolyn. Lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, we will open public comment to any item not on tonight's agenda. Come on up to the podium. And again, please state your name when you begin your comments, and also make sure you fill out a speaker card in the back. Any public comments? Seeing none, closing public comment, and moving on to item 5.1, introduction of Carissa Binkley, Community Development Administrative Technician.
Hi, so I'm pleased to announce that Carissa Binkley is our newest administrative technician. And I want to say that when we went through the interview process, out of all the people we've ever interviewed in my time here, she's one of the few people who came right out and said, yeah, I watched that on TV, I watch all those meetings. Like, I love planning, I know exactly what you're talking about. And right off, we hit it off right off the bat, because, I mean, if you love planning, then you should work in the planning department. I will admit, though, that we did steal her from the hospital, so sorry, Ted, but she's working out amazing. Just a little bit of Carissa's background, she went to school in Florida and has since lived in Austin, Texas, and San Francisco before deciding to come to Truckee. In her past work experience, she's worked at the Ritz-Carlton with a lot of great AV experience that we're going to utilize to the max here, and then again Tahoe Forest. But outside of work, she does all the typical things that people that come to Truckee love to do, reading, riding her bike, hiking, camping, and overlanding with her husband. So I just want to say a warm welcome to Carissa.
Welcome, Carissa. For anybody who doesn't know her, give a quick wave so everybody knows who we're talking about. Thank you. And it was your birthday on like your first day here. I walked in and there was a big celebration going on, and so happy belated birthday for me. Any comments from council members? Seeing none, open the presentation to the public. Ted, yes. I was ready to skip right over that, Ted, but good.
So several weeks ago, maybe a month ago, I was a little bummed to learn that Carissa had left Tahoe Forest. And I think it was about a week or a week and a half ago, I came over to Town Hall for some other reason, and somebody called out my name, and I saw Carissa sitting there. So I would just like to say congratulations to you. The town is a great organization. It's Tahoe Forest's loss, but it's the town's gain. And I will tell you, I know Carissa well, and she does watch the meetings. We had many robust conversations. So, Carissa, good luck.
Thanks, Ted. Any other public comment? Great. Closing public comment on 5.1, and moving on to our consent calendar. Item 6, we've got 6.1, completion of the Stockres Springs roundabout, 6.2, low-carbon transit operations program, and 6.3, modifying the Public Works Office Assistant Position to Administrative Technician Position. Any member of council looking to pull a consent item? Staff? Public? Great. Councilmember Abrams, may I have a motion?
Actually, can I just do one quick thing?
You may.
I just want to, I don't need to pull it, but I just want to give a shout out to 6.2, Low Carbon Transit Operation Program, you knew I would. Kelly, great job, I'm so proud.
Councilmember Abrams?
Okay, sure. I move that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposeds? Great, consent passes. Off to 7.1, Hillary Hobbs, Revenue Measure for Housing Committee Recommendations for a Ballot Measure.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council. My part will be brief tonight. I'm here to present the revenue measure for Housing Committee's recommendation for a ballot measure. I'll present some brief background on how we got here, and then I'll turn it over to our consultant and committee representatives to present their recommendations. As your council is aware, council has identified housing as a top priority for the town, and specifically, both the Mountain Housing Council and town have both identified a need for a dedicated funding source to support housing. As a first step to address this need, in 2018, the town worked with consultant BAE to study possible new funding sources for housing. This study considered a 2% increase in local transient occupancy tax, a half percent sales tax add-on, and a $50 flat fee parcel tax as possible funding sources. As a next step, in spring 2019, the town worked with consultants TBWBH and True North Research to complete a polling test for a possible revenue source ballot measure. These polling tests considered funding for housing as well as open space and public safety services. The polling identified very strong voter support for a transient occupancy tax, increase, and significantly less support for a flat fee parcel tax. These results were presented to council last July and also discussed last August, and the complete polling test results were included in tonight's staff report. results were included in tonight's staff report. In November, your council appointed a Revenue Measure for Housing Ad-Hoc Committee to advise the formation of a possible ballot measure. This committee met three times between November and January, facilitated by our consultant Charles Heath, who's here tonight, and he has worked with the town on previous ballot measures successfully. The purpose of this agenda item tonight is for council to consider the committee's recommendations and provide direction on next steps. So with that, I'd like to introduce our consultant, Charles Heath, from TBWBH, and following him will be committee representatives Carolyn Wallace D., Joan Jones, Stephanie Oliveri, and Ted Owens to provide a presentation on the committee's process and recommendations. Take it away, Charles.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. So, if you want to advance the slide there, Hillary. So I'm going to provide a little overview of kind of the purpose of the committee, how we organized ourselves, how we conducted our meetings, and how we tried to work towards some consensus recommendations, that then I'll turn it over to the committee members to explain in some detail and kind of summarize the nature of the conversation that we have, because we engaged in some really quality conversation that I think will be helpful as you engage in your deliberations in deciding how you want to move forward. So as you know, because you gave us the charge for creating this committee, our, wait, back up. You're one step ahead of me. The purpose of our committee was to look at the feasibility of a revenue measure to fund affordable housing projects here in the town, and we had the benefit of some polling, we had the benefit of the analysis the town had done to look at potential funding sources, so that information was shared with the committee to help inform their decisions. And then based on that, we went through an iterative process where we tried to identify the key areas of recommendations, the decision points that we thought would be helpful to bring back to council, which we'll summarize here tonight, and then we also looked very specifically at, if you were to move forward with a measure, what would be some of the details of that measure, even specifically what would the language of that measure might look like, and then what sort of process would need to follow in order to prepare for a successful election.
Okay.
As you also know, because you appointed this committee, we had a diverse set of interests represented on the committee, everyone from representatives of the town council itself to public safety leaders here in the community, housing advocates, business leaders in the community, and even representatives from the lodging community that would experience the impact, the cost of a TOT if it were adjusted through a ballot measure. And I think that was really helpful. I think we had a really balanced discussion and debate that represented a full, the full variety of opinions on the issue, and everyone was given a chance to speak and be heard, and I think that that led to the thoughtful conversation and the thoughtful recommendations that you'll hear about tonight. The committee met three times, once in mid-November, once in mid-December, just before the holidays, and then once again after the first of the year in mid-January, we met here in this room in the evening. I want to emphasize, these were public meetings. They were Brown Act noticed, just like this meeting. We did have a few members of the public show up, but it was an open community dialogue for everyone to participate in. The meeting organization, initially, we focused primarily on giving background to the committee to bring everyone up to the same level of understanding. We presented the results of the analysis of the potential revenue sources. I went through the polling that had been conducted to understand resident opinions in some detail, and then we also had presentations from town staff that provided examples of past affordable housing projects that would sort of help people envision what a measure like this might fund, future projects that might be on the docket for funding, and then also looked at some comparative information of how did TOT rates here in Truckee compared to others in the region and throughout the state. After, at the end of that first meeting, the committee was asked if there were any additional points of information that they wanted to help move the conversation forward, and that information was presented at the second meeting. We started with a set of decision points that I'll summarize here in a minute, tried to initially identify which are the ones where we could quickly reach broad consensus, and then move towards those that needed some more in-depth discussion and debate, and that process worked well to help us narrow in on the issues that needed some additional focus. By the third meeting, we're kind of down to brass tacks on those last few issues that we needed to figure out to arrive at some consensus recommendations. There was one area that you'll hear about tonight where there wasn't broad consensus, so instead, we took a vote to see what the majority consensus was on that issue, and I think you'll benefit from hearing both sides of that discussion and debate. And we agreed on a process for presenting these recommendations here tonight, and the memo that was included in the agenda materials for you. And then we also discussed a little bit, what happens next, right? What does the town need to do to prepare a measure for the ballot, to meet key deadlines, and then transition this process ultimately to an advocacy campaign, because by law, the town can't utilize public resources to advocate for the passage of the measure. So there was some discussion about the role that various committee members could potentially play as this moves from a town-driven planning and preparing of a ballot measure to an advocacy process potentially this summer. So before I hand it off to the committee members, I just wanted to summarize kind of the key decision areas that we focused on and developed recommendations around. First is election timing. When's the right time to take this to the ballot? Second is tax rate. At what rate would we potentially increase the TOT? Related to that was, should other revenue sources be considered? The duration of the measure, everything from indefinite to something shorter term, whether it should be structured as a general or a special tax, and then related to that, how would those funds be prioritized for use? And then we also reviewed the specific ballot language. So as, using that to tee this up, let me hand it over to Carolyn, because she's going to be the first committee member to summarize the issue of election timing.
Thank you, Charles. I was just hoping you'd go on so we didn't have to. And I will apologize for my speech in advance. They have told me it's not going to get better. However, today is two years. I'm here, so we're doing well. Thank you. That was truly my only hesitation on the pledge. I'm very self-conscious, but thank you for enabling this committee. I think it was an important conversation that we've needed to have for a very long time. So, as shown in your report, and based on Charles's notes, we looked at several options as to the right time to place a TOT measure on the ballot, and we considered which would be most effective. Would it be a special election, a future primary, a general election, or whether to move it out beyond the 2020 ballot? The committee very quickly reached a consensus. November 3rd of this year, 2020, the general election ballot presents the optimal timing. The town will already be conducting a regularly-scheduled municipal election, thus minimizing the cost, which is a great thing. But due to that date of November, July 1st of this year is the deadline for the town, the councils to make a final decision regarding the placement of this measure and to adopt the necessary resolutions and ordinances to place it on the November ballot. This provides sufficient time for the measure to be carefully written and embedded, and additionally, it provides time to adequately communicate with the town voters so they can make an informed vote. While the town resources, as you've been told, cannot be used, it also gives time for the citizen organizers, and there's a lot of us here, to raise awareness and support and using independent volunteers, excuse me, and primary resources to get out the message. As the need to address and stimulate affordable housing issues in Truckee has been longstanding and perceived urgently a need of funds, the committee felt that taking the issue to the voters in 2020, which would make the funding available in one year, would be preferable to waiting for future elections and opportunities. Under legal requirements, the next opportunity would be in 2022, which would cause a significant delay in receiving funds and commencing projects. Thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to Joan.
Good evening, Mayor Polavy and council members. I too really appreciate the opportunity to serve on this committee. It is something that I worked hard on when I was on the council and feel the same way. That was really a great discussion to have. The committee had a fairly brief discussion regarding the rate and quickly came to consensus. We reviewed the data from the survey and agreed that 2% should be the target. 2% provides a nice level of funding at approximately $700,000 per year, while not increasing the overall tax burden on lodging residents above 14%. The lodging operators present felt anything greater than 14% could have a negative impact on lodging numbers in the area. There is also a fair amount of discussion provided by the lodging operators regarding the current and future T-Bid number. The T-Bid Board of Directors discussions were happening almost concurrently with our discussion, and it was reported back at a subsequent meeting that the T-Bid Committee had decided to lower the rate to 1.25 from 2% up for approval. Therefore, if approved, the voter's overall tax rate would be 13.25%. There was good agreement from all members that this overall rate, the market could be sustainable and still provide a good amount, although not nearly what is needed, to provide for a dedicated source of funding for workforce housing. And Stephanie Oliveri is going to talk on next.
Good evening. I too enjoyed working with this group of folks, and I think that we did some good work and we've presented you with some options and hopefully some direction to help you make your decision. I'm speaking on duration of the initiative, and the committee met, and didn't take us long to actually come to conclusion on this, and our recommendation, bottom line, is that this initiative should stay on the, be a tax for from 15 to 20 years. Of course, it's your decision as to how long it would be, might be less than that, but our recommendation was 15 to 20 years, and we believed it should include a sunset provision for accountability. We believe the taxpayers want transparency, they want to know when this starts and when it finishes, they want to know there's an end date, we believe. It is not required to have an end date, however, some continue on indefinitely until it's repealed by the voters, and that's always an option as well. It should, the committee decided that it should run long enough to show results on affordable housing projects. So if it's going to fund affordable housing, we all know it takes a very long time to get that started, and until it starts, until it concludes. If we look at the artist's loft, it was a 10-year slog, maybe a little longer. And so, we certainly want to recommend that this go on, this go at least 15 years, maybe 20, so that we can see projects through to fruition. We also want it long enough to allow for bonding to access project capital if needed. Now, the town doesn't, runs a very tight ship. We don't put ourselves in debt. They are not, of course, anxious to see us do that, which I think is very wise, but we want that option, and if we do a 15- to 20-year time period, it does leave the door open for bonding. And of course, the date should, the date for this should, the ending date should align with a favorable election opportunity for potential renewal. Also, a note that the council could always extend or augment before sunset this tax, and they can also make other changes to it. They can end it sooner, they can add to it, they can make it broader, all of this by putting it back on the ballot. Thank you. Oh, Ted Owens is next.
Mayor Polavy, council members, good evening. I enjoyed, I too enjoyed the committee. I love that type of service. I enjoyed the debate very much. It enables me to get debate out of my house. The dog doesn't care, my wife would prefer I not do it, so I thoroughly enjoyed working with my colleagues on the committee. We had robust discussions. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the committee and its decisions. I am not speaking my own particular position, although it probably wouldn't be hard for you to guess where I might land. So, a general or a special tax was the ultimate question. The recommendation of the committee is that the council pursue a special tax, but I will give you, as it says in the slide, there is a caveat there. That was the majority vote, and that vote was taken in two meetings that I recall specifically, but there were committee members that had a different point of view, so we did not reach full consensus. Considerations for the general tax, of course, it has a lower passage threshold of 50% plus one, so it's much more attainable if the council chose to pursue this matter. It has flexibility to address changing needs, that this council or future councils could change the use of the revenue that would be in receipt. It might be affordable housing today, it might be wildfire next year, it might be something else on another day. It allows the council to adjust those priorities without holding a new election. You can do it by a legislative act of this body. Now, some felt that this flexibility should be in the hands of the council. Will housing continue to be the priority in a down economy? We know back in the day when WOT, the workforce housing organization that formed in the mid-2010s, had nothing to work on after the poor economy, after the recession slide, and affordable housing ceased to be the issue at the top of the agenda. Next slide. So, what about the special tax? Considerations for the special tax are that it has more rigor, it requires a 2/3 vote by the public. However, the polling showed that the support was there for that level, that it is still attainable, but it is a longer slog to achieve a 2/3 support level. It offers increased clarity and accountability to the voters, and this was the difference. The majority of the committee felt strongly that the funds and their use should be in the voter's hands and not in the council's hands, and that was really the difference. It estimated that the review, or we also estimated that the revenue is insufficient to address multiple issues. We know things are very important like open space, fire preparedness, and affordable housing, but when you begin to cut a limited amount of funds that you would receive into a variety of different pieces, it's what I used to refer to as budget dust at the end of the day, and what does it really accomplish? It will require a strong advocacy effort. Next slide, please. There was also a hybrid approach, just to demonstrate that we talked about a lot of different things. So a special tax was one that we talked about with multiple identified priority uses for the funds. That's what the special tax is about. You're telling the taxpayers you're going to use the funds for a very specific purpose, whereas a general tax, you can legislatively utilize the funds for other measures or other issues should you decide to change. General tax was another thing we talked about, pursuing a general tax with an accompanying advisory companion measure. Now, this doesn't have any binding authority, but it would be something on the ballot whereby the public could address their preference for the use of the funds. So that's kind of a hybrid with the general tax. It's passing the general tax but sending the council a little bit of a message. These options were discussed, but no consensus recommendation were reached on the hybrid versions. The recommendation, in addition to it being a special tax from the majority of the committee, was that the funds be utilized for affordable housing. It is the most pressing priority in the community right now. We know it is. We don't see any end in sight, and let's understand that that landscape is very different than it was back in 2008 or '09 with the growth in Reno. There's no safety relief valve that we used to have. Estimated revenue is insufficient to address multiple issue priorities, but it could be more laser-focused on a specific issue such as affordable housing. This helps address other issues indirectly beneficial by providing affordable housing for teachers, nurses, public officials, safety workers, and other skilled workers that comprise the community. And with that, I will turn it back over to Charles, who will cover the ballot language proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. So, based on those recommendations, at our last meeting, we reviewed sample ballot language. So we basically took the various components of the recommendations that you just heard about, and then built that into the 75-word ballot statement that would sort of be the centerpiece of a measure that you might put on the ballot. So legally, what's actually presented to voters is this ballot question, which is limited to 75 words by law, and it's this long run-on sentence that has to satisfy various legal requirements that must be disclosed to voters. So this is what we came up with. This is partially based on some of the messaging that evolved from the polling that voters found to be important, plus the required elements such as the tax rate and the estimated amount to be generated annually, and a brief description of the types of programs and services that would be funded, along with some accountability provisions that would be built into the measure as well. We did work with the town attorney to review this as well, and we believe it meets legal muster. This is not something for- This is not something for your approval tonight. This is something that, you know, once final decisions are made, we know which of the recommendations the council will ultimately follow. We will refine this and bring it back to you in the form of the ultimate resolution and ordinance that would place the measure on the ballot. So from there, let's talk a little bit about next steps. So I think now that you've heard the committee's recommendations, what the council needs to think about going forward is that, you know, if you want to move forward in this direction, then we would need direction for town staff and the town attorney to work with me to develop this proposed measure based on the specific elements that we've discussed. While the town cannot engage in advocacy on behalf of this issue or this measure, you do have the ability to provide impartial information to the public. And that's something that we've done in advance of the prior road sales tax and the trails measure a few years ago, to make sure that the community was well-informed of the issues that they were going to be asked to consider on the ballot, specifics of the proposal that they were going to be asked to vote on. And so we would recommend that you engage in that process here in the coming months in advance of your action to actually place the measure on the ballot. And then, as has been mentioned, a separate and apart from the town's activities, the committee members and other members of the public can, on a separate track, continue discussing independent advocacy efforts. But in a special tax environment where a two-thirds vote would maybe needed, I think that advocacy effort would be quite important. And so you would want to make sure that that piece is taking shape before you ultimately pull the trigger to put this measure on the ballot. So in conclusion, I just wanted to quickly review the timeline for how we get from here to being on the ballot, if that's your decision. And I apologize, some elements of the slide got cut off. But we've essentially completed the feasibility study at this point. We've presented the poll results. We've presented the committee's recommendations. The next step would be to go do that informational outreach that I described, and then take what we've learned through this process and what we continue to learn in conversations with the community to refine and develop the actual legal documentation that this measure would require, and then bring that back to you for formal consideration and adoption prior to that July 1 deadline, which is the last date you can adopt a measure to place on the November ballot. And then we would transition into the advocacy campaign. I will say that, you know, apropos to your conversation prior to the regularly scheduled agenda with things that are going on in the world with coronavirus and the volatility in the stock market, I am concerned that the polling that we conducted many months ago may not be as relevant today as it was a few months ago. People always ask me, you know, how long can we trust that these poll results are going to be valid? And my answer always is, well, you can trust them until something fundamentally shifts in the environment. And the ground shifted beneath a little bit this afternoon. And the ground is shifting on a routine basis out there in the broader public. So my recommendation to you would be that before you make these final decisions, likely in a June council meeting, I think some updated opinion research to confirm the direction. We have some more specific proposals now from the committee that may deserve some testing with the broader public to refine that direction. But if we move forward with the informational outreach process here in the remainder of March and April, I think that aligns us well to do some polling probably end of April, early May, bring back the results to you along with the final documentation for your decision in June. So with that, happy to answer questions along with the committee members.
Thanks, Charles. Thanks, Joan, and Stephanie, and Carolyn, and Ted. That was a great summary of basically what happened over three months. Tony and I were both there, so we were, it was great to be a part of that. I also want to take a quick moment to thank some of the other committee members who are here tonight. We really appreciate the volunteer time that you put into that. So Patty Baird, Cassie Habel, Paco in front, Jim Winterberger, Jan Zabriskie, Valerie, I saw in the back, Chief Celine was also there. Chief was, he's hiding behind somewhere. There he is, sorry. And Shawna Doherty as well. I don't think I missed anybody who was on that committee. Chief Leftwich, he's gone, though. I was only recognizing people who were here. Chief gets plenty of recognition, you know, we're not gonna.
He's writing a press release.
We do appreciate everything that Chief Leftwich does. He helps us along all the time. But thank you very much to you all. We really appreciate the input and what it took to get us here. So, you know, what we're basically going to do up here, just to lay it out, we'll get our questions done, we'll open it for public comment. And I was thinking we would just kind of run through the same five pieces as well as we deliberate to. So any questions either for staff or for Charles, or potentially for a committee member that, you know, you want to get answered? Tony was there. Do you have any more questions?
I might have a few.
Go ahead.
All right. So for staff, this is a series of kind of financial inquiries. What is our current bond rating?
Double A plus.
Chrissy, you're gonna, probably, we're gonna have some questions for you.
We could give Kim a call. We could either call Kim in Arizona, or we could bring Chrissy up to the staff table.
Chrissy's here.
I will go to the staff table, yeah.
We'll bring up Chrissy, and I'll be off the hot seat.
Is that, is that the highest rating, or is there a higher rating? Not a bond.
There are higher ratings available, like AAA. Depends, you, sorry, can you read out? There are other higher ratings available. It depends on the type of bonds you're issuing, and each situation would be different, and we would be rated on a particular bond issuance.
Okay. And what type of audit results do we usually get?
We've always had an unmodified or clean audit opinion in the town's history.
Always? There's never been one that's been less than that? Didn't we recently receive some sort of award for our audits and how clean they are?
Well, the award every year is our clean audit opinion. We have recently received some budget awards. We've also applied for our first time for an annual financial report award from the Government Finance Officers Association, but we haven't heard back on that one yet.
Okay. Keep our fingers crossed. And so what type of reserves do we typically have?
We have reserves in align with council policy, and those are thoroughly discussed in our annual budget processes. We have specific reserve policies that set aside 25% of annual operating revenues. And then we have an informal reserve cash available target of $5 million in the general fund alone. So that doesn't include any of our special revenue funds or enterprise funds.
And we, last year, out of our general fund, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, not only we set aside the $2 million for the housing, but we did some other, we funded some other projects as well on top of maintaining these reserves.
Yeah, we had a number of special fund designations. For example, $500,000 for a project that's connected to 7.4, which was for open space, ultimately committed at this point to the land trust. So there were, yeah, a number of those. But the $2 million specifically was a set aside for two, essentially two years in a row for workforce and affordable housing.
That on top of making a commitment to a housing coordinator out of the general fund as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so is there a minimum number of years, and maybe this is a, I'm not sure who a question for this is, is there a minimum number of years we need this tax provision in order to be able to bond it for a larger-scale project? Does it have to be more than, what, 15 years?
I don't know the answer to that specifically. I think we would have, in each instance where we would desire to issue bonds, we would consult with bond counsel, who would analyze our available tax revenues to be able to commit to the financing.
Okay.
It really depends on how long of a financing you're looking for. If it's a 30-year, you want 30 years of secured financing. You know, it doesn't mean the tax has to last that long. It just means at the end of that period, you're going to be looking for general fund or other revenues to pay the bond. You've got to pay the loan.
But typical COPs, certificates of participation and stuff, are a 20-year timeframe? Is that right?
I don't have the answer to that.
Okay. All right. I think that's what we've been.
That's what Kim said.
Okay.
If Kim said it, we know it's true.
Ah, this is so true. So a couple of questions for you, Charles. Do you have the, you have the survey that you prepared and the questions that you asked and stuff, right?
I do. It was attached to the agenda item tonight.
So would you mind reading for us specifically the question that you asked if the voters were supportive of?
Sure.
Because the language was pretty specific.
It was. And I should note that the language that was tested in the polling tested a general tax, not a special tax. And so it touches on areas outside of affordable housing, unlike the language that we proposed tonight. And that's one of the reasons why I'm recommending some additional polling, is because, you know, we're sort of now talking about a slightly different animal than what was contemplated when we originally did our polling. But if you give me one second here, I will get that in front of me.
And that is, that was actually, you answered my second question, was, was this based on a special tax or a general tax assumption? And it was a general tax assumption?
Yeah. And the thinking there is, you know, because of the lower threshold going into the polling, we don't know what level of support we're going to see. The simple majority option, the general tax, gives us the most flexibility to then, you know, maneuver once we see what the level of support is. If we test a special tax but support comes in well below two-thirds, we don't know for certain how a general tax would test. So it's sort of the safer approach. But the language we tested specifically was to provide funding for general services in Truckee's, such as providing affordable housing to low and middle-income workers and seniors, preserving natural open-space lands, and supporting law enforcement and emergency preparedness. Shall an ordinance be adopted increasing by 2% the Town of Truckee's transient occupancy tax paid by guests of hotels, motels, and short-term rentals, providing $700,000 annually for town services until ended by voters with all funds locally controlled?
Okay. So that had no limitations on the time?
Correct.
So in perpetuity until voters voted it down or voted it out? And it covered a broad spectrum of things, not just housing? And so that's the concern here, is if we narrow it to housing, we really should go back out to validate that that, that we still have that level of support?
I think so. Although I'll say that, and there's other contextual information in this poll that suggests that affordable housing is a very high priority for Truckee voters. So I feel fairly confident that if the tax mechanism remains a TOT, the rate remains 2%, and the focus is affordable housing, I think we're likely to see fairly similar results, all else being equal. The challenge is that, you know, in the coming weeks and months, will the economy be equal to what it was when this poll was conducted? That's anybody's guess, because each morning I wake up to find out what the day holds.
Yes. Isn't that the truth? And can you reiterate what percentage of people were not in favor of this tax by the end of the survey? You did it at the beginning, you did it at the end.
Sure. So at the end of the survey, asked people, after people had, oh, there we go. So the final ballot test, this is after people had heard all the arguments pro and con and detailed descriptions of what the measure would do. As you can see here, only about 15% of people were indicated opposition to the measure. So that's pretty overwhelming support for a tax generally, so.
I would say so.
Yeah.
So there was a really interesting table on page 13 that shows the demographic breakdown of support. And there was a small, I loved that you asked this question, basically whether or not the person you were talking to felt the town was fiscally responsible or not. And as you might guess from my previous questions, I'm very fascinated with that demographic and what kind of challenges we might face with them. And so when I really zeroed in on that table, I found that there were a small percentage of people that felt the town did poor or a very poor job. What was that number?
About 8%.
8%. That is a really small percentage.
And by context, I don't see numbers like that in virtually any other California community.
Wow, really?
The ratings of the quality of life here, the confidence in town services, and the fiscal management is truly off the charts.
Wow. That's, thank you for that context.
Sure.
And then what was even more fascinating to me is of that 8%, can you read to me the percentage of them that was still in favor, still in support of the tax measure?
A little over half, about 51%.
How do you explain that?
While the, well, first of all, it's a very small sample size. It's 8% of the people we interviewed, so you got to take that with a bit of a grain of salt.
Good point.
So four of those people, right, decided that even though they may have some concerns about fiscal management, they were willing to take the leap with you and invest in affordable housing.
Okay. I just find that so fascinating. And then the last question is, so the decision between, I mean, we have to decide tonight whether or not we're going to continue down this path, but tonight is not necessarily the last opportunity to make the decision on the special versus the general? Because that seems to be the one thing that is really being, potentially being deliberated.
We have until July 1st to make those decisions. That's when the actual legal documentation needs to be adopted and delivered to the town clerk to administer the election. So we have some time. Obviously, we wouldn't want to leave it to the very last moment. And in order to do some outreach to the community, the more specificity we have, the more we can tell the voters.
Precisely, especially if we do decide to do some follow-up survey. Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Abrams, any questions?
Yes, so I wanted to ask a question about the duration, 15- to 20-year recommendation. And maybe this is a question for the committee, or Stephanie. Was 10 years contemplated at all? Was there discussion about 10 years? A decade as a, as a starting point measuring stick, if you will?
Yes, we did start at 10 years. And I think the committee quickly decided that it was too short a period, as I mentioned, because of the timeframe it takes to get housing projects going and seeing it through, but also the bonding potential for it. That was really something that we thought was, something we wanted to keep in our toolkit.
Okay. And assuming that the TOT proceeds, you know, remain roughly $700,000, I suppose over time, there's going to be inflationary increases, assuming our economy remains strong, that's going to equate to anywhere from, what, $10 to $14 million over that period of time collected? And the idea is to leverage those dollars, correct? We certainly would leverage any way we could. It doesn't necessarily mean bonding, though. I mean, leverage typically you think of as, you know, going out and getting a big chunk of money. Our belief is that particularly for workforce and affordable housing, smaller amounts of money that catalyze large amounts of money or projects or programs tends to work better. Given the magnitude of projects, Artist's Lofts being $38 million, that, there's your, there's your bonding capacity for the entire duration. So we don't have a specific, you know, list or a plan for how to use every dollar, but some of the programs that our housing coordinator Shawna Doherty is currently working on using the $2 million, the idea would be that those would continue on. So down payment loan assistance, rental assistance, conversions, ADUs, all of those things, and projects. Certainly, you know, having that chunk of money when you really need it for a project that's ready to go is critical. But we believe the programs unlocking units, et cetera, equally critical. Okay. And the definition of affordable housing right now is up to, what, 120% of AMI, average mean income? The technical definition that the state and feds use and that you normally think of as affordable, we call it capital A affordable, goes actually from 30%, extremely low, all the way up to 120%, the top of moderate. We've been looking, of course, as Mountain Housing Council has helped us work through with potentially widening that range toward the missing middle end, because even at 120%, it's very, very difficult to find housing, particularly for sale housing. So if we use the terms like workforce and affordable housing, we believe that we're not talking about necessarily capital A, you know, 60% below or 80% below. The reality is, we all know that there are sizable amounts of money available from the state and federal government at kind of 80% and below. There's almost nothing 80% and above. Okay. And then a question on the special tax, general tax. So general tax, as I understand it, appears to offer a fair amount of flexibility. Is there a way to craft a special tax specific to housing but
special tax specific to housing, but that would allow for some flexibility?
There is. And I think, who is it that, which, was it Ted? Yeah, thank you. There was looking for, looking for the, Ted Owens described that one. So, you'd be, it would be a clearly earmarked tax, special tax, but earmarked towards several things. So, you'd specify those several things. If it was law enforcement and affordable housing, you'd have a special tax.
And could you specify, for example, 50% goes to housing, 25% to whatever the other issue might be?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
My only quick question, maybe for Charles, is, or maybe for anybody, is when we're looking at that 15- to 20-year horizon, I think one of the, one of the goals that came out of the committee was, we don't want to deal with, you know, gap years and things like that. So, does that leave us at either 16 or 20? If we were going to consider any type of renewal or extension and/or just voter feedback, it could be a, could be a negation, right? It could be, whatever that word is. Sorry.
You know, I don't, I don't think we have to plan it down to that level of detail, because you always have the ability to go out and seek a renewal early. And frankly, most agencies do, because as you're nearing the end term for that, that measure, budgeting becomes difficult, planning becomes difficult. So, instead of doing it the last year before it actually expires, you want to do it a couple of years before it actually expires, so that you, you know, leave yourself a second bite at the apple if you come up short or what have you. Also, when, I mean, if we were talking about a four- or five-year tax, we can reasonably look ahead four or five years and to say, okay, here's what the environment's going to look like, and here's what our needs might be. 15 to 20 years, it's nearly impossible to do that. So, I think this is more a question of kind of what's the council's comfort level? What do we think offers the appropriate level of accountability to the voters, while also giving you some, some runway to deliver on your projects and, and show some progress? You know, and the longer you go out, obviously, the more you have the ability to leverage capital and to, you know, more certainty in terms of future dollars that you can utilize.
Also, a special tax does not have to be consolidated with a council election. A general tax does, but a special doesn't. So, if this is adopted by the voters as a special tax, and it's going to be renewed, the town could ask the voters to renew or extend it in any year, not just council election year.
Great. Thank you. And then, two other just quick questions regarding the, both an advisory committee, but I'm speaking about specifically the account, what's the word I'm looking for? The Accountability Committee?
Oversight.
Oversight Committee, thank you so much. The Oversight Committee, so that is, that does or doesn't or have to be built into the actual ballot language, or that's just sort of an extra bonus that, that we go for? How does that work?
Yeah. So, you're not required to have an Oversight Committee. It's something that you can optionally elect to include.
On either a general or special.
On either type of measure, yeah. Not required. There are types of school measures and whatnot to do require them, but that's not true of these types of measures that we're discussing tonight. If you do want to include it, typically, that is a component that's listed in the actual ballot language. That's why we included it in the proposed language here. It is up to you to determine how that committee would be constituted. Some cities, we see utilize an existing fiscal advisory committee or some other commission to perform that oversight function. Others create a brand-new committee for the specific purpose of looking at the proceeds from this measure. That's, that's totally up to you. You can be very specific about that in the ballot materials that you'll adopt to put this on the ballot, or you can leave that somewhat vague to figure out, you know, if and when the measure is approved. So, there's a lot of flexibility there. I will say that, in my experience, Oversight Committees make a lot more sense in a special tax context, because you have clearly defined uses of the funds that the Oversight Committee can then look at and compare. Okay, here's how the town used the funds compared to what they promised to voters. In a general tax, it's a different scenario, because you might imply some prioritization for the use of funds, but those funds are essentially available for any lawful town purpose. And so, then, sort of the question is, what's the purpose of that Oversight Committee if they're basically just verifying that you received the funds and used them, because there, there is no earmarking?
Can you speak just also a little bit to your experience in working with so many jurisdictions, maybe in the, in a short historical timeframe, last five years or so? Sort of maybe the percentage that you've worked on for general versus special, and then, within that deeper context, percentage that actually pass?
Far more general taxes go to the ballot than special taxes. Cities are very privileged in that you have the ability to do simple majority taxes, school districts, hospital districts, other public agencies don't have that ability. They're locked into special taxes, and they have to get two-thirds. And there are large parts of California where two-thirds is darn difficult, if not impossible. We don't see 80% support for a lot of taxes around the state. So, so that, that's why we see a lot of general taxes go to the ballot. Plus, it offers, you know, flexibility on the use of funds to, to meet changing needs. Most of the TOT proposals that we've worked on for various cities are structured as general taxes. There's no requirement that they be so. That just tends to be the, the approach. And some of it also just has to do with, you know, what's the motivation at the time you take this issue to voters? Is it motivated by a specific issue, or is it motivated by sort of a need to generate general budget stability? Then, you choose the revenue mechanism that best fits the problem.
And what would you say, sort of percentage of pass versus fail on, on both the few specials and then maybe the majority of generals?
I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but the supermajority two-thirds measures pass at a much lower rate than the, the general taxes. Most general taxes in California pass.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Everybody good for the time being? Yeah? Great. With that, I'd like to open it up for public comments. So, please come on up to the dais. Please state your name. And at some point, before you leave the building or the room, please fill out a speaker card and hand it to Judy. Raising her hand if you don't know Judy. And we're going to keep you to three minutes. We do have a lot of speakers tonight, so don't be offended if I cut you off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Polley, Town Council, Town Staff. Happy to say it was a privilege that I was chosen to be on the Community Advisory Committee with regards to this topic. As the staff report states, this was a great group of Truckee citizens working together. I have, have a big shout-out to everybody on the committee, Town Staff, and Charles Heath. As stated in the report, the committee was extremely civil with no major stalemates or big issues with us. As before, the 2% TOT tax was agreed to, the timeframe of the November election was agreed to. But the exact type of tax, and whether it would be 100% for the housing solutions we currently face, or other issues, that was not a unanimous decision. I feel that a few of the other major items that were identified in the town study that we've already talked about should be recipients from some of this anticipated $700,000 raised annually. While housing is a true hot topic today, the study also showed protecting the environment, preserving open space, and along with emergency preparedness to be equally important topics to the community. In the report, the ballot text language showed that around 80% showed support. And like we just talked about, that included all three of these items. Housing is one of the town's big issues today, and I agree it is, again. But will it be in five years, 10 years, 20 years? We don't really know. While I feel that we should direct funds now to the housing issue, I feel it is not wise to lock up these funds for 16 to 20 years to go only to one area. A lot can change in five and 10 years. Regarding the housing issue and solutions, I also ask, what else can we do to deal with this that hasn't been tried? We have no regulations today on STRs. We joined the rest of the major resorts. Sometime, we will have maybe some chance to change that by creating regulations that can unlock some housing. Also, what is the number of possible housing units that can be unlocked from all of the residential units that are currently being used for cannabis cultivation? This is the commercially and industrial use of occupying designated units that could become unlocked. Therefore, I would like to see more flexibility with other areas also included with the use of this tax money. As to the special type of tax, I could go with either a general or a special tax. If a special tax, again, I would like to see the inclusion of more areas, but also remember that takes two-thirds to pass. If a general tax, I'm not bothered. I feel that the needs of the community could be addressed as the studies have shown. So, therefore, you know, I'm here just to say, I'd like to see this be opened up for you guys' consideration to include more items that are involved in the community besides just the housing issue. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Paco.
Hi, Council, Suzy Tarnay. I, I need to start by saying I have no opinion on which way this goes. I did get to go last week to the 2020 Planning Commissioners Academy for the League of California Cities. The League Fiscal Policy Advisor named Michael Coleman actually went over this in one of our presentations on what city planners need to know about city finance. And his recommendation was to always go with the general and not the special tax. Again, I have no opinion. I just wanted to say what his opinion was. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzy. Thanks for going to that academy as well.
Jealous. Hi, I'm Krista Finn. Nice to see you, Council. It's always a pleasure. And I just want to say how grateful I am that we had enough people step up and serve on these committees, and that I wasn't one of them this time. But I just have, I want to throw out there my support also for a general tax, because we are in the middle of emergency. It may not be a coronavirus emergency, but it is a housing emergency. And we need to start getting money on the ground. To me, worst-case scenario is if this doesn't pass. Like you said, two-thirds is a, it's a pretty heavy lift. We don't know what's going on with the economy. It's quite, I don't know. I can see, I can see things happening. But I do think it's really, really important to start getting the money flowing into housing in this community. So, to me, judge those two evils. If it doesn't pass, I think, like I said, that's kind of a worst-case scenario. How quickly can we bring it back? In what sort of form? We're already putting back, affordable housing priorities have, are, continue to be pushed back. You know, it's, that's, if our solutions were working, we wouldn't be here now talking about it. Versus town mishandling the funds or them not getting spent on affordable housing. But I feel like that's what you guys are for. That's why we voted for you. We trust you. We trust you to provide oversight. We hear, I, I trust that you are hearing us, saying that affordable housing is a priority for the community, and that you will make sure that those funds get spent on affordable housing solutions. So, I trust you to do that. So, that's my statement. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista.
Hi, I'm Patty Baird. My husband and I, we own and manage the Cedar House Sport Hotel. I also sit on the T-Bid Board, and I was also part of the Advisory Committee for the TOT increase. It's no secret, I was very much, I was a minor, one of the minority voices. I feel that if we were going to do the increase, that it should be a general tax for all the reasons that were quoted here. But recent events in the last two days, I want to present a question. I have been watching the COVID-19 virus for some time, because my son lives in Singapore. I also have a lot of friends and hotel owners and the Dolomites in Italy. They are going through a major crisis right now. Governments there actually are very supportive of businesses, where they are looking at paying rent for some of the businesses and so forth. They are looking at tax concessions, not tax increases. And so, I am going to present to you, while I, I totally agree that if we do this, it should be a general tax. But I think we should also perhaps consider that we table this right now, because this may not be the time to be considering a tax increase. I think, you know, maybe in a few months, maybe we can look at it again. But right now, we don't know what is around the bend at all. I, as Colleen had mentioned, I sustained a pretty major hit in two days of mass cancellations and so forth. I don't know what, I mean, we in the hotel industry, we're exposed to a lot of people. What happens if a staff member is infected? I have to shut down. It's not just reduced revenue, it is no revenue. So, those are the things that cross my mind. And I think it should be under consideration that we perhaps table this for the next few months before we actually consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Good evening. Steve Frisch, Truckee resident, and also the President of the Sierra Business Council. I strongly support moving forward with the analysis of this issue, redoing polling, because a year is a long time, and it's an unsettled time right now. I support a general tax. I think a two-thirds threshold is extremely difficult, and we saw a number of ballot measures that were projected to win on March 3rd, lose across the state, that had a two-thirds threshold, including transportation measures in Los Angeles and Marin, including a number of things that had been polling relatively well. So, I think repolling is a really good idea. I think that any serious disruption in the economy and/or due to COVID, could, COVID-19 could actually shift the ground under our feet without us really knowing that's occurring. So, I like the point that you have two months, or three months, rather, to make this decision. I think we might know a lot more six weeks from now than we know today about both the state of the economy and COVID-19. I'm less concerned about the economy, because a recession is likely to be a recession, but I'm more concerned about the uncertainty around the COVID-19 issue. But I do think that there's another serious issue here, which is that I work with 32 jurisdictions in the Sierra Nevada. And I'm going to, I can't believe I'm going to say this, because we occasionally have our differences of opinion about things, but this is the best-managed town in the entire region. Actually, it's the best-managed jurisdiction in the entire Sierra Nevada region. It consistently gets great audits. It's incredibly accountable. Anna, I, I loved your line of questioning about audit and transparency. I don't think we have a lot to worry about as far as funds being mismanaged in this town. I think there's a tremendous amount of citizen engagement and involvement in transparency and accountability. So, any concern about a two-thirds tax measure based on accountability, I think is, is actually not well-placed in this, in this situation. And I do think that housing is, I also want to make the statement that if we are entering a recession, or if we have future recessionary periods during that 20 years, or I would recommend 25 years would be a good timeline, down economies are a good time to build affordable housing. It, you have labor availability, there's, there's still capital availability in the down economy. People are actually looking for places to put their money. So, this would provide the flexibility to be able to act wisely when you can get the best deal, which I think would be a really good idea. But, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
My name's Jan Zabriski. I'm on the, the TOT Revenue Committee. I'm going to explain why I'm in favor of a special tax. First, there is strong demand. The polling that's been done shows a really strong local demand for housing. I don't see that changing through recessionary periods. It's a long-term issue. We're going to have it through the downs and through the up periods, just a matter, it's a degree of how bad it is. The polling shows we have a cushion. Now, that's past polling, but we should move ahead with a special tax, because the higher threshold, if the, if the people in the community vote for this, it shows there's a community commitment, because it's not really the council that's deciding whether we have this tax. It's the community. And strong community support at the polling will demonstrate that there's a commitment for the kind of housing we want to put in later. It's an affirmation of what we already believe. And it attracts investors and gives confidence to developers and builders that the community is behind that. And I think that's valuable. I agree that additional polling needs to be done to confirm it. I too have noticed that, that a number of bond measures failed in this last election. I don't think, though, that applies to this town, but it does show we're going to be dependent on the, the retail community, the builders, and the real estate industry in this community to promote this thing. It's going to require signs in their stores. And anybody who pays less than $30 an, an hour to their employees is going to want to support this measure. this measure. I'm not concerned about dedicated funds being, being unavailable for other projects. The town already has a very large budget to address emergency situations and other issues. What is important is providing that confidence that we have funding for housing. More generally, I see lodging as being connected to housing, both because it's heads-on beds and because the lodging industry generates the need for employees who are at the lower income scale. I think voters will see that connection. I was in favor of an indefinite duration, but given that we've reached a consensus for something less, I think 20 years is appropriate. You could always take this back to the voters if for some reason, housing disappeared as a need. Thank you.
Good timing, Jan. Thank you. And a second Jan.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's probably the only place in the state of California who got two Jans with public comment. Jan Holen, Truckee resident, Mayor Pallavi and honorable council members. I'm a participant in Truckee River Cohousing, a developer of Truckee River Village where we're actively working on building approximately 60 units of housing against, housing for, specifically for locals against some economic headwinds, as you know. I'm generally in favor of a tax for housing and I'm grateful for the work of this committee. And I am in favor of this tax, by the way. I don't know how you got that message, Stephanie, but I heard through the grapevine that, anyway, the 700, 700 K per year is, is, my concerns are that 700 K per year is not enough to make a significant impact on the housing challenge. And I, my hope is that if, even if this does go through and it passes, that we are looking at other ways to raise funds to address this in the short term. However, our priorities may change in the next 10 to 20 year horizons. So, you know, it's not surprising to me that the polling was favorable for increasing taxes on, that most Truckee residents don't pay. I personally would love to see more revenue generated through a parcel tax, but I will trust the work of the committee that this is the right way to go. I am, along with many other people that spoke, I'm in favor of a general tax with advisory text primarily for, primarily for housing and other visitor impacts perhaps as, as our needs change. 15 to 20 years is a long time and I would imagine that we may end up with other priorities. I also want to make sure that we're really talking about increasing housing stock and we don't necessarily encode affordable housing specifically because we know that there is issues in the 80% to 180% AMI range that isn't technically affordable. So I think that's important. And lastly, if there are people that would rather see a special tax because they don't trust how our government will administer the funds, I think they should run for Town Council. I understand that there's a couple of seats available in November. So, thank you.
Here, here. Thank you, Jan.
My name is Jim Winterberger. I'm the chair of the T-Bid Committee. I was also on the Revenue Measure Committee. And council, Mayor Pallavi, I do best when I just talk, but I'm actually going to read so I don't repeat things that were already said. Comments that I'm about to make are by no means anti-housing. And I want to really acknowledge and appreciate the, the work of the committee because there is some political veterans on that community that were, are really mentors. And I think the reason why it went so smoothly was because of their experience in the room. So I want to acknowledge that. And I think any outcome here is probably going to be a good one. So I don't think we need to argue about which one's better, but we could all offer our opinions we're here for. That room was fairly divided with a couple of things. So with that, last August, I stood at this podium and I looked at all you guys in the eye, most of you, and I said, "It's really important to get this right." And we were, we were looking at each other, nodding. So before I die on the battlefield with this point that I've brought up before, we are missing the boat on a flat tax. Period, end of story. A $40 a night tax on a vacation rental would do two things. A, it's stable. Because having owned a business for 20 years in vacation rentals, I can tell you that prices go up and down, but demand is generally there. You know, so A, it's stable. That is a demand side component. And a $40 a night tax is very meaningful to more inexpensive vacation rental inventory, which to Paco's point, could unlock housing. So you're killing two birds with one stone there. I'll never bring it up again. I promise. Housing is definitely our top priority. There is no doubt about that. But in addition to housing, the survey yielded strong community support for protecting the environment. I haven't heard anyone mention the roads, proving education and most, most importantly, keep us safe and thriving in the event of emergency. So while housing is top priority now, there could be a day where another issue takes center stage. I could think of a variety of things, like what just happened an hour or so ago, or two hours ago. So again, notwithstanding the good work of the Revenue Measure Committee, please consider this opportunity to revisit either the idea of a general tax or a special tax with a companion measure for housing, number one, but also open space, community and climate resiliency. That was the end of my prepared statement, but to Patty's point, I took a massive haircut in the last two days. I don't have a lot of hair to lose, but I took an absolutely massive haircut. And when I go to work tomorrow morning, I'm going to pull up my computer screen and you are going to see a six, possibly seven-figure adjustment. So we might want to table this. I'm still in support of it, but can we buy a couple of weeks? Because I think we'll have much different information. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Valerie Brinker and I'm the Vice Chair, CAT Affordable Workforce Housing Solutions Group, and also was the CAT rep on the Revenue Advisory Committee. CAT supports the town's effort to find a sustainable funding source to support affordable and workforce housing in our community. We believe a parcel tax is the most broad-based and sustainable option. A parcel tax is a flat amount on each parcel each year and is not based on property value. So it doesn't fluctuate with economic cycles. Our committee research determined that a parcel tax could be used to secure bonds so that taxes leverage to gain much more funding for projects than just the amount collected from the tax. With low bonding costs, that would be part of an anticipated consistent revenue stream of $650,000 from parcel tax. Bond funding combined with matching grant funding would likely bring 10 to 12 million to the town of Truckee to support the construction of affordable housing. The annual parcel tax revenue would cover interest expense and payoff of bond principal over time. Although it may be possible to secure a bond with a TOT revenue stream, we don't think that this would be a prudent decision due to the significantly higher cost of bonding against an uncertain revenue source. We need to use our resources carefully so that every dollar goes to housing. With that said, we support the concept of a transient occupancy tax as a compromise measure, recognizing that some funding for housing is better than no funding at all. We also feel that the tax should be for a special checked, tax just for housing. Despite the higher threshold for approval, we believe that there's enough voter support to meet a threshold when 100% of the funds are guaranteed to go toward what is considered the highest present-day challenge in our community. As a general tax, we feel that many voters will be skeptical that the funds will go, actually go towards the issue they feel is most important. Even though the tax is not on residents, the committee knows how an added expense on lodging can affect our local economy. And some local short-term rental hosts back this tax out of their income. So it does have an effect on many residents and property owners, not just visitors. Additionally, as an advisory committee member, it was stated by town staff that they have never had a reliable and designated housing fund source to rely on. So now this is our chance to make it a special tax. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Valerie.
Hi, Heather Rancow, local resident. I also sit on CAT's Affordable Housing Subcommittee. So when looking at affordable housing, whether it's a 650 K or 750 K annual amount of funds that you receive, it could take multiple years to have sufficient funds for a project. Another couple of years to entitle, approve and build the project. I think that when you are asking for voters to approve a tax for a current specific use, that they should know at the end of the day what they are going to get and in their community, what they're actually voting for. And in the end, the community should get, to use these funds for affordable housing. The funding for affordable housing is a small amount, a small dent. It is what it is and will take, it'll, is a small dent that will take to help amend our community's affordable and workforce housing crisis. Whether the economy is up or down, affordable housing is always a need. As the income gaps get wider, building costs grow, it will only continue to stress and make affordable housing even more difficult, thus only increasing the need further. Regardless of what the economic future is or any future town priorities, people, especially those in the lower incomes, will always need more housing than any community can ever provide. If Truckee has set the stage, an example of how a town can be financially responsible, it's time for the town to set the example for funding of affordable housing by dedicating these funds for affordable housing. In regards to the parcel tax or TOT, I think a parcel tax makes more sense. But unfortunately, it was not seen as a viable, as viable based on last summer's survey looking at a tax measure versus a parcel tax. I think that the committee's recommendations are valuable, but the world changes every day, as we have seen today. Even though TOT was said to be stable, we just heard twice that it's maybe not, not. I think that there should be some additional review completed before finalizing the council's opinion and selection of the type of funding measure. I think the town council should do a full review and reconsider a parcel tax. In addition to bonding options, other positives from a parcel tax is that it is a guaranteed number versus a fluctuating number, that TOT is based on a TOT and occupancy based on people that come to town. Either way, I want to thank both the council, the committee, our community for getting affordable housing a permanent funding source. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Hi, Joan Jones, back again. And I'm just here to lobby a little bit more on the special tax. Housing's been an issue in our community since the 70s and 80s, when I was first started on a committee with the Economic Development Committee at the Chamber. So I don't think it's one that's going away. The committee was formed to find a source for funding for affordable housing, workforce housing. We as a council, staff and community have never asked our community for a general tax, always a special tax, always to give transparency and accountability for where the funds were going. 10% of TOT already goes into the general fund. And that fund has grown over the years, but never has it been dedicated to one source. And just an aside, Measure V passed by an 80% margin, Measure R passed by about a 77% margin. We, we have great success on special taxes because our community understands what the purpose is, what the duration is, and what we're asking for. My concern is that the monies will get shifted around if it's a general, a general tax and reassigned to others, other community needs. There are other sources of funds for those community needs. And I urge you to, to look at, hardly at a special tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Hard to beat that. Jan, I'm delighted to know you are in support of this tax. That rumor mill, that rumor mill is awful. So having been born and raised in this community, I think one of the most beautiful things about living here is living with the very people who worked in this community and who do work in this community. And so many people today are deprived of that opportunity. I grew up knowing almost, with 500 people living here when I grew up, I knew everyone. My brother had a paper route and we delivered papers. I knew everyone who lived in every house. I knew their dog. I knew the kids' names and I knew where the father worked. We knew everything about each other and we supported each other. And that's what is beautiful about Truckee as a community. And I was reading in the BAE report that 58% of the people who work here commute in. And so many of the town staff commute in. They can't afford to live here. We know the town has made housing a priority. It is a priority. And without housing the community and the people of this community, we can't be great. We can't be a true community that loves the people around us. People who have to commute to Reno and commute to other areas to see their children's Little League games and they're late, they can't, they can't have a family that grows up here and knows the beauty of this area. They have to grow up somewhere else. So I say it's important to have a specific tax because the money is $700,000 a year. As Ted mentioned, it becomes budget dust when it hits the general fund. There are always other places to put it. There are always new council people. We can ask of you, as we look at you and look you in the eye tonight, to support this, but someone else is going to come along. We can't count on each council to have the same enthusiasm and, and love for this project of housing our people. So I say 700,000 as a special tax is the only way to do this. When you're asking people for money, it's a little different in getting two thirds vote. When it is not their money, it's a different thing. And if they're not paying this tax, I think there's a possibility that this could very easily pass. However, I have mentioned to Charles and I've mentioned to the committee that we must do another survey before we put this on the ballot. We need to be sure. We need the information so that we know that if we ask for a special tax, it has a possibility of passing. When I was working with MAP and doing transfer fees with developments like Martis Camp and North Star and Gray's Crossing and all of the others that we worked with and got transfer taxes from, the reason we were able to get transfer taxes was because the developer was not paying that tax. They agreed to pay it because the tax was being paid by someone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Mayor Pallavi, Town Council. I'm Stacy Caldwell. I'm the CEO of the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation and strategist behind the Mountain Housing Council. And I just want to first say, there's been a lot of really great work done. I got to audit, attend one of these committee meetings and it was a robust conversation. And they have spanned the gamut of options. And what I'm really here to tell you tonight is November 2020 needs to be an opportunity for our community to speak up for housing. And I think we're poised. I think that the region is showing coordination like it's never shown before. I think the institutional leaders that represent Mountain Housing Council are collaborating and talking and supporting each other's work. I think that the resources that are on the table, whichever way you go, have the opportunity to be leveraged and you're having the right conversations for that. So just don't lose sight that it's time for the community now to do the lift. And the lift is on November 20th, or 2020. And for the Mountain Housing Council, we can help position that vote. We won't necessarily be advocating out there. I think there's a lot of people on the council who will use their personal time for that. But we can create products, we can create educational materials that any citizen group that wants to know is housing the right decision, has the backdrop of the last three years of work that we've all done together, as well as our next future months as we really pull those products together. So I encourage you to continue to explore a sustainable funding stream so that you can use those dollars to leverage. And I will underscore achievable local housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Mayor, council members, Ted Owens. I'm speaking tonight and served on the committee as a member of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. Affordable housing and the missing middle, housing is extremely important to not only the Chamber, but its membership, but everybody in town. This effort began as a, an affordable housing discussion, as been, has been pointed out. And it has evolved into a bit of a different discussion, which is exactly what my concern is between the difference of a general tax and a specific tax or a special tax. It evolves. And I'll just be really simple. I'm not going to get into details or statistics tonight. I think it's very important to be honest with the voters. Don't lead with one sexy issue if it might change, maybe not by this council, but by another council in the future. Because transparency is your stock in trade. That's what the public values you on. And this council and this town has utilized transparency to its benefit for 20, over 25 years. Don't throw that to the side. Remember also that you're taxing others. You're not taxing yourselves, you're not taxing Truckee residents, you're taxing visitors. And the hospitality industry will be doing the heavy lifting. and the hospitality industry will be doing the heavy lifting. They do the collecting. They deal with the people at the counter, not, they deal with people on the other end of the phone, not necessarily an easy thing. So think carefully, and if the goal was solving housing by creating a sustainable stream that you can leverage against, then do it. Commit to it. Commit to it with a special tax for housing, or don't. That's where the conversation began. That's where it should end. Thank you.
Thanks, Ted. Anybody else? Public comment? Seeing none. Closing public comment. And with that, we're going to take a nine-minute break and reconvene at 8:05. Thank you. We're going to reconvene. Reconvene on item 7.1. Public comment is now closed, and we are going to bring it back to council for deliberation and potential action. Any additional questions from council, anything that was brought up during public comment? Councilmember Tierman, please.
Yes, question for Charles. Relating to polling, if we were to go back and refresh the polling, what kind of timeframe does that involve? And do we have, as a town, a cost for that?
In round numbers, I believe the initial round of polling was around 25,000. I think this can probably be a more focused abbreviated poll because we don't need to retest everything that was tested initially. We have a lot of direction on messaging and such, so we can kind of just focus on components of the ballot measure, as we've been discussing tonight. We have a little bit of a conundrum in terms of the timing, because I think, given the uncertainty of current events, we want to allow some time for things to normalize to the extent that they are over the next couple of months. But then we also need to make sure that we've conducted the research early enough for you all and us to utilize the data to form some recommendations and finalize the language. Realistically, you know, your last council meeting in June is where these decisions need to be made. So I think that, and Trucky's also a smaller community with fewer registered voters, so it takes a little more time to get an adequate sample. We'll probably want to be in the field with the poll for a couple of weeks. So I think we'll want to, you know, draft that survey, have it ready to go into the field no later than the 1st of May, you know, utilize that period and may to collect the data, bring back results around the end of the month or the very beginning of June to inform your decisions.
Thank you. You're good. Okay.
I just have a quick follow-up question on David's question. Besides polling, as far as getting the temperature of where people would be, based off of kind of the way it was focused on the TOT tax, it's probably not the best idea, but what would it look like to add or dig a little deeper on a parcel tax?
We certainly can. There are trade-offs, because the more variables that you introduce into a poll, the harder it is to sort of focus the voter's attention on the, you know, the key issue at hand. So we can test a variety, but it tends to mean that we get less reliable and focused results on any one proposal. So upfront in the questionnaire drafting process, we'll have to make a decision, is the purpose of this poll to assess multiple revenue options, or is it to get us the most accurate read possible on a TOT? And there's just going to be some trade-offs there, and I assume staff and, you know, some representatives of the community and council will be part of those decisions.
Great. I think questions good, maybe move into deliberation. If anybody wants to make any type of opening comment or otherwise, I think we can sort of take it one by one. With that said, do you want to start us off, Vice Mayor Clovstad, and maybe kick us, see what you think, where we're going?
I do have just a couple of kind of broader opening statements before we start diving into some of the specifics. And first of all, to just recognize the, that what a night we've already had, okay? The emergency declaration, the earthquake, and clear changes, immediate changes to our hoteliers and our visitor activity, which is the foundation of which we're making this plan. So that being said, I think we do need to continue to progress this issue, but with care and caution. I also would like to appreciate the past council members, some of them who are still actually here, because it is really thanks to your great work that we get to enjoy our positive standing within the community. That took specific, long-term, critical thinking that we all owe a debt of service to you for. I also want to really appreciate the thorough staff report and committee's work and consultant report to provide the multitude of the options to the council to choose from. This was not an easy issue to tackle, and the committee did, I think, a fantastic job of dissecting and vetting these different options. And I still hear and understand the people in the community that would like to see other pursuits like a parcel tax. But I think our focus here is really clear, that we want to serve the greatest need of our community, which has been clearly identified as housing, and this has been the case for years. And so we have to look at what is our best chance of success for that. And so I think the transient occupancy tax really is that. So that's my framing. And if we want to start with the election timeframe, I think that's pretty much so a no-brainer. That was unanimous on the committee. It makes a lot of sense, and the sooner we could do this, the better. We have the, as long as we have the political will still at that point in time. And the 2% increase also seemed to be unanimous. I think the 15- to 20-year item, I was really hoping for longer, more like 30 years, but I could be satisfied with a 20-year duration, because I do think it's important to have accountability for that as well. So I think those are the pretty easy ones, and as soon as you're ready, we can dive into the more interesting conversations.
Great. Maybe just take a quick straw poll on the tax rate, parcel tax, flat rate tax versus 2% increase to TOT. I personally agree with Vice Mayor Clovstad on, you know, the others have been vetted. I truly appreciate all of the options in front of us. I think they're all valid. I really appreciate the flat fee. I think it achieves a lot of different stuff. So everybody does know that flat fee was also presented to the So everybody does know that flat fee was also presented to the T-bid. They also chose not to go with it, unfortunately, for other reasons. So, you know, there's been an opportunity to vet a couple of those issues, and I do think we continue down this path that we're on with at least the tax rate and source that's in front of us. I think that that is the right way to go on this. So I'll look for either nods or comments if anybody wants to open that up to a different opportunity at this point. I am seeing nods and agreement.
Well, I'll just say, not to speak much longer than what you just kind of said, this whole, this thing I did, I was actually the guy who sat up there and presented this whole idea of a flat tax that came out of Cav way back when. So I've been kind of thinking about this for quite a long time, something on a flat tax, but a parcel tax, excuse me. And the only reason why I bring it back up, and I'm pretty much on board, I see where this is going, TOT probably is the easiest path. The current, I guess, the current feeling that the community is that that is a much easier way to succeed. But with, in light of what's happened, that the number one issue with the TOT tax is the fact that it is not, not stable. It can change, and it can change quickly. And if we're really serious about dealing with our housing, housing is a community-wide problem, is not really for any one group only. And I think that is the only reason why that comes back up in my mind, as I'm not so quickly wanting to brush it under the rug, only because of what's kind of happening now. But with that said, I do see that TOT tax would probably be an easy way to go, and I still could be, and I still am supportive of that, if that's where we end up on that 2%. But I don't want to just blow off the other quite yet.
Great. We hear you, and you'll have a chance to place your vote however you want as we move forward. I'll add two things to that before we move on. One is other potential tax measures that are out there, we don't work in a vacuum here. We are subject to other county and overarching entities. There has been talk of a parcel tax or some other funding mechanism, both at the county level. That is not dialed in yet. It's not specific, but just want to be clear that that is potentially on the horizon. So there are other potential taxing mechanisms for other funding needs down the road that I think we're going to see and probably be subject to. And then just quickly moving on to the use of funds, I really look at this in a way that, basically the way that we budget, and granted, we all haven't been, you know, we've all have different levels of budgeting experience, especially on this council, that carries forward to new councils, there's experience that carries forward from past councils. And to me, housing has been the priority, it will continue to be the priority, and our staff does a great job of making sure it is known what a specific measure was passed for, whether it is allocated or not. So on the housing front, I think, you know, regardless, that continues to be a priority, and no matter what we bring to ballot, that will be known to whoever is setting the budget, and they are always at the behest of voters regardless. So just as we start to deliberate on general or special, I think use of funds very much dovetails into general or special, and how we as council members have been through different budget processes, how we work with staff, and really how we're held accountable at the end of the day by the voters, most importantly. So how we, how, you know, and history lives on, right? Every 15 to 20 years is a long time, but we have to be able to see that end game, and we have to be held accountable, whoever's up here on the dais, no matter what their term is. So we have agreement on timing. I believe we have agreement on tax rate with potentially a slight hiccup that we'll get to. Duration, we'll come back to maybe, and we'll just sort of head into general or special, which seemed to be the synopsis of the public comment. Before I move on from that, you wanted to certainly say something, Councilmember Tierman, and then Abrams, come back to that. Councilmember Tierman first.
I wanted to go back to the first three bullets before we move on, just to kind of close the loop at least on my thinking. I'm very sensitive, I think we all are very sensitive to our lodging community. They are the entity that will bear the tax. We heard tonight, the concerns stemming from what's happening worldwide, and certainly in our local region. So I think this sort of, that concern, and going back to Councilmember Commendatori's comment about the uncertainty, we can't necessarily bank on $700,000 every year. So that is going to fluctuate. So I just want to be sensitive to that, and I think it underscores the importance to think about refreshing our polling, based on, you know, what's been happening the last couple of months and what could be happening in the months ahead.
Yeah, I think, and maybe that comes into next steps after we figure out where we're going to go with the five things on the screen, we'll come back with some next steps and decide where to go there. I don't, I was making the assumption that we all understood that transit occupancy tax was a variable, it is not a definite, property tax, well, a flat fee parcel tax would be a definite, but not a percentage necessarily. Regardless, I think we've chosen that path, we understand the implications of it, we've had the opportunity to vet the other funding mechanisms. This is not the end-all, be-all. I want all of us to make sure that we're remembering that, that we're incredibly sensitive to all of the factors around us. A ballot measure is something we take incredibly seriously. That's why this is probably the, I don't know, 20th meeting I've at least been a part of talking about it. Our taxing authority is something that we have to take very seriously. We have an incredible responsibility to make sure that we uphold. So yeah, we absolutely have to make sure that we're making the right decision. Let's just not lose fact, this is not the end-all, be-all. This is, either we're moving forward or we're not. I personally think we've come this far, we absolutely have to move forward, being sensitive to absolutely everything else that's going on around us. And we would be doing ourselves and our community a disservice if we didn't do that. So those are the assumptions I'm operating under. I think that you're all with me on that. If anybody is not, please speak up, but otherwise, you know, I'm definitely moving on those assumptions. Did you want to mention something?
Not anymore.
Sorry.
No, it was, I really wanted to highlight that my thoughts around the importance of revisiting the, and doing some more polling, just to be sure that we have accurate information in moving forward. Otherwise, no, I'm completely aligned still.
Let's just make sure, like Charles said, the polling's specific, so let's make sure we have the right questions to go and poll on. That will only help us. So, okay, let's move on. I think we're, we all are comfortable on the first three bullets. I think we're primarily comfortable on the fifth bullet, as in, you know, housing in all of its forms is the main goal of this, and really this comes down to, do we at least proceed with general or special on our minds? A lot of the positives and negatives have been pointed out to us, you know, as any, I've never been an elected official before, but as an elected official, certainly success is, you know, one measure that I personally want to go by, and, you know, simply by that measure, a general makes a lot of sense to me, so I will just put that out there. I think there's an incredible responsibility when it comes to a special tax. I think there's an even more incredible responsibility when it comes to a general tax, because you have to uphold what you went to voters for. So does anybody else, who would like to start? Do you want to start, Vice Mayor Clovstad?
Yeah, I do have some more thoughts on that.
You keep going, how about that?
Okay. Well, I do think, based on the language of the survey, that it is important that if we are going to, A, narrow what we're talking about to the point of a special tax, that that needs to be polled as such, because that's not specifically the information that we, that we have. The information that we have was very informative to get us to where we are now, and it was a very critical step, but I think now we're ready to make that, that next step. And again, with all the same caveats, we will, we want to continue this, we don't want to put a pause on this and then lose our opportunity to get this on the, on the November ballot, because, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, if we are to do a general tax, that does have to be on a general election cycle, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if we are unsuccessful at a general tax, then we could always push it to the March 2021, right, as a special tax? Is that accurate? Okay. Worst-case scenario, but that again, just kind of keeping in mind the critical timing of this, that we need to start generating these revenues in order to start making this impact in our community. I think we are clearly laser-focused on housing, and I don't think anybody on this council or in staff has any interest in creating budget dust. And I am going to use that phrase in the coming months, Ted, so thank you very much for that. We are focused on success, and so I am aligned with the committee members that we're on the general tax side. I think just making sure that we have that, that lower bar to accomplish and be successful is critical right now, particularly given some of the uncertainty that we're facing. But again, I think the polling information that we're going to go back out and get will better inform that for us going in the future. And I'm certainly willing to reconsider that as that, as we gain additional information for that, for that decision point. So I think the other, yeah, that, I just, I really believe that our town is laser-focused on this issue. We've been bold in supporting housing in our community, we've, we've put our money, or, you know, the money where I'm, we're walking the talk, we're putting out the $2 million, we've got our housing coordinator. This is clearly our focus, unless and until there is another priority in the community, and that to me is key. Because again, as we're seeing tonight, there are shifts and changes that are far beyond our control, and we want to be able to be responsive to those. And so let this be an example for us. We need that flexibility in order to best serve our community. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Commendatori?
All right, so I have a few notes here that I'll try not to ramble and bounce around too much, but first of all, this whole, this committee was created to discuss revenue measure for housing, not to discuss revenue measure for other things that also might come along. As much as important as all those other things are, it was for housing. That's why we were there, that's why we've been doing this. Much like the meetings started off today, we talked about making a statement and stating a state of emergency. Well, if this is such an emergency, then this puts a stake in the ground, and make it a special tax, and say what it is, and use the money for what it's supposed to be. That's what our members, our community members expect from us. I think, to me, it's pretty clear, it's not a matter of trust, it's not a matter of other things happening. Life happens, things evolve, and if it's no longer a problem down the road, then we can end it. You can actually get rid of a tax. You don't have to keep taxing just because, well, we have a tax in place. If housing is no longer an issue down five years from now, 10 years, 20 years, which I doubt, but if it was, we have that ability to pull out. So I'm pretty, to me, it's pretty clear, pretty simple, this should be a special tax. Assuming, I'll make some assumptions here, assuming that the, our polling is still accurate or somewhat accurate, there was a pretty big margin, 80% is a pretty big margin. As far as whether the questions were worded correctly or not, I don't really believe that the person responding to the poll was understanding the difference between a special or general tax. To them, it's just like, oh, tax somebody else, money to go towards these things, all sounds great, they're in for it. But there was a couple spots here that did point out that at the end of the day, housing was our community's number-one issue. So sticking with that, special tax to me is most critical, it's the most important part to be, have integrity and transparency, and do what we're going to do.
If the polling that we continue to do over the next six weeks does not support a special tax, do you support a general tax for this purpose?
After I see the polling, I'll be able to answer your question.
I don't, that's, I mean, I'm asking you a question because we're going to have to move forward.
No, because fundamentally, I just told you, fundamentally, I believe this is what we should be doing. This is a tax for housing, it's all about housing, it should be for housing. If the climate has changed, and housing is no longer an issue for us, then we should be talking about a different tax for a different thing, and not calling it something that it isn't.
But that wasn't my question. If the polling doesn't support, if we don't see 75 to 80% support.
Yes.
Okay. Do you still support a general tax?
No.
You do not. Thank you. Turn my mic off, sorry. Councilmember Abrams.
Okay. I'm completely aligned with what Councilmember Commendatori said, except for the last part. I think that, and I'm, I am a little bit torn, because it feels like, I usually would lean towards creating some flexibility with unforeseen circumstances, or if suddenly something happened where housing, you know, if a fire came and flattened our community, well, all of a sudden, housing isn't our top concern, because nobody has a house, and then we have different concerns, and it opens up flexibility for use of those funds. But if it is, if this is really our focus, and if this is our community's focus, then having a special tax offers the community a chance to really show that. If, but see, on the other hand, this is where I get a little bit stuck. On the other hand, if it's a general tax, the community has control over who's sitting up here in these five seats. And if they don't like what the people in these seats are doing, they can change that too. So I'm inclined to lean towards the special tax. If polling doesn't show that that would easily pass, especially with recent changes in our, in our economy, and then with everything that's going on right now, then I would be in support of a general tax. I feel like it is important enough for us to put our money where our mouth is, and do everything in our power to, to implement a consistent, ongoing source of revenue for housing.
Thank you. Your turn, Councilmember Tierman.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the committee. We had a broad representation, the lodging community, all kinds of segments of our community, and I think the committee did an outstanding job doing the hard work, doing the heavy lifting, which is what we asked them to do. We asked them to go away and really study and dive into this issue and bring it back with their recommendation. I've been here since the turn of the century, the year 2000, moved to Truckee. And for 20 years, housing has been an issue, every one of those 20 years. When I moved here, it was an issue with my family, it's an issue today. So that has not changed, and I seriously doubt that in five years, or 10 years, or 15, or 20 years, that's going to change. I think housing is just going to be an issue that's going to be with us for a very long time. The origins of this, this whole effort right now were founded on finding a way to generate a sustainable source of funding for housing. And I think the work of the committee, the work of this council, past councils, has brought us to this point, which is a good thing. I agree with the need to take some time and kind of refresh things, so I think we've had some discussion on that. This question, general or special, has been a difficult one, and I didn't come here with any sort of prejudged notion of where I would land. I can make arguments for both of, both of these kinds of taxes, general or special. Definitely see the pros and cons, and I can understand why the committee struggled with this and struggled to reach a consensus. this and struggled to reach a consensus. My inclination right now, all that being said, I think the words of former Mayor Joan Jones kind of rang with me or stuck with me tonight, and that was reminding us that we already collect 10% TOT, which goes into our general fund, and it's one of our more substantial general fund percentages. We have sales tax, we have property tax. So that was a good reminder. We have a $25 million general fund, and every year with staff, we work on a budget process to decide how to allocate those funds to what priorities. And I think Vice Mayor Klosstad, you also had a good reminder of our commitment to housing in recent years. So where do I end up right now on this question? You know, to be honest, I'd like a little more time, but my leaning is towards a dedicated special tax versus the general fund. I think, or a general tax, rather, I think we have identified this, past councils have identified this, and as I said, it's been an issue in our community ever since I've lived here. And I think to have a dedicated stream for the purpose of helping to create a broader array of more affordable housing is a good thing. I don't think we do this at the expense of other priorities necessarily, but I do think it does give our community that level of certainty, and, you know, there are off-ramps along the way if things do change. So that's kind of where I think I am right now.
Can I pose to you the same question I posed to Councilmember Commendatori, which is if our polling doesn't show success for a special tax, do you still support a general tax for this purpose?
I would support a general tax, but I would also want to see that a good percentage of that is dedicated to housing. In other words...
I mean, we dedicated $2 million to housing just this past year, which is far and away. So I mean, that's, I don't think we can structure it that way in the ballot language, just to be clear. In a general tax, we can't say, this goes to housing, right, Charles or Andy? That would be a special tax.
No, I understand that. I guess my wish would be that this council and future councils would continue to make that a priority because, again, I think it's going to continue to be an issue in our community for another decade, two decades, and beyond. So that's what I mean. But I would be supportive of a general tax.
So I think it sounds like there's a majority here, but I'm going to bring up a few additional points and see where that puts everybody. I want to be clear that I'm also 100% in agreement with a special tax for housing. I have some incredibly challenging concerns about that, that it will be successful, though, and I want to talk about why. At our ballot committee hearing, I asked the group in two subsequent meetings, I said, great, I'm on board. Who's ready to stand up and champion it? And I asked people to raise their hands, and there was 19 people that didn't raise their hands, to be clear. So to me, that shows that while everybody is very passionate about housing, which we've seen and we know, and it is absolutely important, and it's our priority, we don't have a Workforce Housing Association of Tahoe Truckee right now. We have a Mountain Housing Council that can't advocate, and other than that, we have a whole bunch of sort of disparate organizations without a clear leader. Okay, so that's just sort of one thing I want to put out there, that if somebody was up here at this podium tonight and said, I'm ready to take this, let's roll, I'm on board, I'd be right behind that person, and I think we'd have a unanimous vote to move forward. I haven't seen that. Nobody's come and talked to me privately and said that, and I've asked that question of a few people so far. So I just have concerns that we don't have that person or necessarily a group of people yet, and that could still come. So that's a concern. It's not a make or break. I also have a number of concerns because what I generally see when we start to use different language about housing and I see a lot of stuff going on, we've been in public meetings, I've been in Placer County public meetings for 15 years, I was on the Planning Commission and now here. Oftentimes, and recently that has changed, but oftentimes, the people against a certain project outnumber the people for it. And that's simply, it's not that they don't want housing, it's that they don't want housing right next door to them. And part of our job, and one of the reasons why I ran, was to be brave and was to take chances and was to try to make the right decisions for our community in the face of a whole bunch of neighbors being pissed off that they're going to get a higher-density development next to them than was originally planned. And that resonates with me a lot, and it resonates when people are here in a big room. Nobody's going to come up and say they don't like housing. When you're in private in a ballot box, it's a really different story. We have this challenge of growth versus no growth. We have this challenge of, I've been here for 30 years, and I want to move here and can't afford it. There's a lot of really robust discussion that's happening in our community as it pertains to all this. And just when people, at the end of the day, go to put their number, you know, and even on a phone poll, and I'm not trying to discount any future polling, people are going to say, absolutely, I love the idea of housing. That's great. And the second that billboard goes up with a notice of 120 units, you know, within a quarter mile or a mile of your house, you don't like housing as much anymore. And we've seen that. So I just want us all to be really, really, really clear about this issue and about how we move forward and the work it takes, as Charles sort of illustrated when I asked him about, what do the majority of jurisdictions do? Do they go special or do they go general? You know, and the answer was very clear. I'm not trying to say that a special tax is not feasible. I think it very well might be. I think it's going to take a ton of work. It's going to take a ton of heavy lifting by all five of us up here and by every single person in the audience and watching on TV to make sure that every single business, every community member, everybody who stands up and says they want housing, is going to speak at the ballot box. And I think that's important. What I think a general tax does is I think it does give us flexibility. I think it provides a path to success with a ton of hard work still. I'm not trying to discount that, but everybody has jobs and families, and we're up here, and we're spending countless hours already on a lot of things that aren't going to go away all of a sudden in August. Well, they might, you know, a little bit, but. So I just, you know, I want to be really, really, really clear with all of us as we make these decisions about how we move this forward. I also believe the flexibility over time and as needs arise for other purposes brings a broader umbrella, a broader level of support. It brings organizations that are not necessarily in favor or opposed to housing to the table, right? It brings, you know, it brings people who are incredibly worried about emergency management or open space or however we end up crafting this to the table and to the umbrella. And I personally think that's valuable. I think it provides better voices for passing a ballot measure, and it really gets us out there. I am absolutely not going to stand in the way of us moving forward with a 2% special tax tonight. I would be extremely cautious, and as we commission new funding, to make sure that we do make the right decision. If all of our goals up here are to pass a ballot measure, and that is the goal, to pass a ballot measure for increased revenue, that we will earmark for funding, whether it's earmarked by the voters or earmarked by council, you know, that's really the final decision we are going to have to make. So I'm going to, you know, get off my soapbox there, but I'm just trying to be really brass tacks with all of us. Like, it's great to think about, yes, in an ideal world, absolutely, special tax, housing, you know, let's keep it to 20 years. All of those things are absolutely perfect. I don't think we have a perfect world, and I don't think we have a perfect ballot box, and I like the odds. If I were to gamble, I like the better odds. It's as simple as that for me. It's an odds game. I trust our town and I trust future councils because I was ingrained into this without having any clue how we budgeted, and, you know, I was shocked. And that carries through between staff and as council changes over. Yes, Town Manager?
Yes, Ma'am. I'm not looking to change anyone's mind here and thank the committee profusely for all their work. They did an awesome job. It was actually one of the most impressive debates I've seen in local government. And like Councilmember Tierman could argue, special tax, general tax, all day long and come up with great reasons. But there is one, I think, thing that we do have to, that I would just throw out there to just, as we move forward the next couple of months, keep in mind, that's this notion of trust. And I think Vice Mayor Klosstad, you start asking a series of questions, you know, does the public trust, you know, the town with money? Seems to be true. Do we do a pretty good job with money? Seems to be true. But, you know, even if it's a special tax, and I'm not arguing either way, you still have to have trust. And I'll give you just a very tangible example. $700,000 a year goes, gets, we win, special tax, goes into housing fund. Right now, we're proposing, and we will be proposing in your budget, that that 700, whether it's special or generals, earmarked to housing. The total amount of money to support the Housing Program Manager comes out of the general fund, so add that on top, and even more add on top. We're looking to try to have a stable funding source that's even more than this tax, right? And we hope to be able to keep that going for five years or more. But a different council and a different staff could say, well, what if we just paid for our staff that does anything related to housing out of the special housing tax? Perfectly legitimate. All of a sudden, it starts looking a little more like budget dust. So what I'm suggesting is, trust is really the key. Do we trust ourselves to spend the money, you know, we want to do? Does the community trust us? And I think that's the key, whether it's special or general. Because as complicated as our budget is, there are ways of moving monies around that would make even a special tax less trustworthy and a general tax more trustworthy or less trustworthy. So I don't know if that's making sense, but it's just something to kind of contemplate. It's a complicated formula.
What you're basically saying is you can spend $700,000 under whatever guise you want, whether, depending on, you know, you could say, yes, planners, but...
It can be, it can be...
It can be justified in a number of different ways.
Because you're moving many pots of money around to do different things. And I just think that really, we have to trust ourselves and hopefully the community trusts us as well, that we say housing's a priority. It's going to be, and if I'm here, it's going to be more than a $700,000 priority.
And as we move through this, as you're alluding to, we're creating a five-year plan that is above and beyond that $700,000. And the council has already shown support for that. We're going to dive deeper into that as part of the budget process, and ultimately, all of the tax dollars coming in and going out are available to the public, and you can scrutinize that at any point you want. You can show up to our budget meetings, and you could also elect somebody else up here. So...
Yeah. Yeah, budget meetings are always open to the public, as are the audits, at the same time of how that money gets spent. So to keep moving this along, either new information, your chomp, go ahead, yeah.
I was just going to pose a question.
Please.
Given the, I think we have a consensus on refreshing our polling, getting a better understanding of what's going on out there versus what was happening a year ago. Do we have to lock into this decision tonight, special or general? Or can we, does it not make sense to get the information back and then...
I personally would like to provide pretty clear direction with a backup plan.
But then why even bother doing the refreshing of the polling, then?
So we can fall back on our backup plan if we need to.
He asks a specific question in polling if you're doing a general or if you're doing special. So we have to decide, right?
Well, let me just try to articulate what I think I've heard as direction, and then you can tell me if I'm right or wrong. What I've heard is the primary purpose of the follow-up polling that we will be doing would be testing the viability of a 2% TOT special tax, because there seems to be consensus that if that dog will hunt, so to speak, that's a direction we may want to go. But if we're seeing vulnerability there, then the council would want to consider a general tax as a fallback. So that's basically the direction I would take to the pollster then, is to say, let's design a questionnaire to generate data and help answer that question. But, you know, should this primary option look vulnerable, let's make sure we collect some data to help us understand what our chances look like in a general tax environment.
And I think we're also interested in making sure that we understand the different, if there's a shift in support, whether it's covering all of those items that is in the polling now versus just housing specifically to that.
So look at the full array of issue priorities.
Yes.
Got it.
So one other thing I'd like to see, and this is, I don't think anything we can take action on, but between now and then, I'd like to see some champions. I'd like to see people step forward from the community who are going to champion this, and yeah, I'm putting this out there. I'm here to help. I have another job. It's up here. And yet another job, it's over there. We can advocate, yes. Council can advocate.
I thought council could not advocate for...
Just town staff cannot advocate.
You can advocate as individuals, not as council members, and you cannot use any town resources in that avocation. We can't print things for you, we can't mail for you, can't do it on town time or town facilities.
And you can't identify as a town council member, or you can?
You can say that you're a town council member, but you have to clarify that you're speaking only on your own behalf and not on behalf of the town.
Copy that.
Thanks for the clarification.
So there you go.
You know, one thing I'll say about, I think you bring up a good point, having a dedicated leader or a group to do that, and I would put it out there to the public that this is really an important thing, because at the end of the day, if this is really important, it should pass with 66%, and there should be a group to help make it pass. So someone, we do need people to step up and a group to step up or someone to form something. So I support what you're saying there. I did have one other question, though, before you sit down, because it's not a real big issue, but one of the comments that we've had here is just, what was the, you know, we have an advisory committee who kind of went through this whole process, and it's that they were, it was on a consensus. Well, it wasn't necessarily like 49, 51% either, split. It was a pretty strong group, and I don't remember what the actual vote numbers were, if I remember, but they were a pretty strong group that was significant for special tax versus a general tax. And the only reason why I bring that up is because we asked the committee to go through this. I don't want to make it, I don't want to, it's an important part that a big group of that people did support a special tax. So there's some integrity when we ask a group to go do something, and when they come back to us, even if it's not unanimous, it is a big portion. Do you remember what the vote was at all?
I don't have the, I'd have to go back to my notes to look at what the vote, Hillary, do you have?
Nine, four, so it was just over two-thirds supported special tax.
Yeah, I think in theory, everybody supports a special tax. Let's be clear.
But I just...
I just don't know that it has the backing to work. I think we're just taking a huge chance, right?
And that's why, that's why I would say then, the importance of this tax, whatever it should be, if it's not going to be passed as a community-wide support, then I'm not sure what the support really is and how important it is to the community. I mean, if it's really important, then the community should be stepping up and doing it.
And personally, and I'm going to speak to that, that's why I was elected. I was elected to make brave choices and tough decisions that people might not want in their backyard but are good for the greater people in the community who unfortunately may or may not vote, or who don't even have a chance to vote because they're commuting from Reno because they live in Reno and they can't afford to vote, even though they need housing, right? So it's the business community, it's the construction community, I mean, it's pretty much every single industry in our town who can't always vote and don't have the ability to vote because they're not here. So we are charged with making the best decisions we can with the information that we are given to do that. And before we leave this, I want to be clear that I did hear from at least a majority, I think, subtracting Councilmember Commendatori, that this isn't an exercise in vain, that we are going to support a general tax if we don't feel quite comfortable once the polling comes back, if and when we have a champion committee, that we're going to move this funding mechanism forward no matter what. That's what I personally like to stand up for tonight as well and be on the record supporting that.
Well, I think we've got some work to do, and it's going to come back to us, and let's see where we're at after that. I mean... let's see where we're at after, after that. I mean, I can tell you right now, at least for me, yeah, I'm generally supportive of a general tax, but also recognize that we want to do the due diligence and then bring this back. And, you know, we're entitled to change our minds as well.
Totally. I'm not holding you to it. I'm just looking for affirmation that we're still going down this path, that if we are going to continue to go down this path, our goal at the end of the day is November 2020. It's a 2% increase to TOT. It's a 15 to 20 year timeline. The special or general tax is up for debate, but the use of funds is consistent. And to me, I see that. So it sounds like we do have consensus. So council member Tierman, would you like to provide the action? Does anybody else have anything they want to close with? How about we give everybody one more chance to say something they haven't said if they want to?
I just want to thank you for all that you said about the reasons why you want to have clarity here. And I think that's really important to provide to our community because they have been waiting for this for a long time. And we need to at least move forward. Even if we need to make an adjustment based on whatever's going on in the environment and the rest of the world, we need to continue moving forward with this. And I think the debate here tonight was very valuable.
I, sorry, I didn't have a chance to mention, but I really also do appreciate tremendously the amount of time and effort that the committee put in and really respect your input. I know we all said it, but it was important for me to be able to verbalize that too. Thank you.
Thank you. We all appreciate all volunteer hours in this community all the time, in case we don't say it enough.
Well, I have all to say, I don't want anyone to misconstrue my concern. I think this is very, very important. Don't, how we get there and some little details of it are all I'm talking about here. Integrity, transparency, doing it right from a bigger picture than just housing. But housing is important. It's been important to me. It affects both personally, affects my place, affects our community. And so I don't want you to, don't, don't take whatever I've said as I have a problem with any of this here. I'm just trying to get to the right answer, what I think is the best way and what is best for the community and what is those other people who aren't here also, who are saying from the other side. So there's a balance of everybody. And it's just, that's all I'm trying to do. So please don't take that. And then I will say, you asked me if I'd be in favor of the 50%. The only reason why I say no is, well...
You don't have to decide right now. I'm trying to gauge everybody's temperature for how we move this forward. That's all.
I get you. Let me just finish.
Yep.
It's that I'm not there yet because there are some, it goes back to the bigger picture. What are we really trying to do? And it kind of goes back to that whole parcel tax and some other parts. If we're going to really start changing things, let's start changing things and do it right. So just so...
Great. Thank you. Motion. Action. So we need a motion. What would you like from us? Sorry, to clarify, you want action?
Recommendation, right?
We're looking for direction on next steps. I think we have that. So we will...
You have what you need.
We will work with our consultant to craft some additional polling and come back with recommendations coming out of that this spring.
And anybody out there who's interested in championing this, come talk to me, talk to Jeff, talk to all of us, Shawna, wonderful resource. We welcome all of those conversations and, you know, really look forward to seeing who's willing to step up and take charge of that as we move forward. I think that's important for us to see when this comes back in six weeks-ish, maybe? Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you. Appreciate everybody's time on that. We're on to 7.2. We are just flying tonight. Item, what do you want to do? Yeah, we are gonna, so just as an FYI, depending on how this evening goes, item 7.3 and item 7.5 are potentially on a chopping block, just to let everybody know, in terms of where we end up on time. And those items will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting, should we decide to proceed with said chop. With that said, Becky, take it away. Tahoe Donner roadway vegetation removal project and budget amendments.
Okay. Thank you. So really what's before you tonight is essentially a staff recommendation to create a CIP and some funding for a project that will remove vegetation along roadways in Tahoe Donner. The project area is highlighted, the yellow roads here on this map. It's all the roads that are in the Truckee Special Service Area 1 boundary. It's about 60 miles of road and about 271 acres of right-of-way. So just real quick, some of the reasons that it's important to maintain vegetation along the, within the right-of-way, there's, you know, here are some photos here. The one on the left just shows that sometimes the trees, the vegetation actually grows into the right-of-way, so it's important to keep that clear. In other circumstances, it might be that a tree is growing close to the pavement and might cause root damage. It also impacts snow removal when trees are located and vegetation's located close to the edge of the travelway. That means we have less room to put snow when we're doing snow removal. And there's a higher likelihood that some of the snow might fall off of limbs that are overhanging on the road. Also, sometimes the vegetation's in the way of drainage infrastructure, like ditches along the road. So it's hard for us to get equipment in to maintain those drainage ditches and the drainage infrastructure. So that's another reason why we want to keep that clear. An added benefit is fire resiliency. It gives, by reducing, it reduces the chance of fire starts by reducing the amount of fuel on the right-of-way. It can reduce the amount of heat on the corridor during an event. It can reduce the likelihood of debris that's deposited on the roadway during a fire event, and it also increases the width of the fire breaks. So these are just some photos of some past projects the town have done. We have, the town staff has performed this work in the past, but because there's such an, so many miles of road for this project in particular, we're actually recommending that we put this project out to bid so that it can be completed this summer. We would, I would note that we are, what we're planning to do is put three contracts out to bid separately. We were going to leave it up to the contractor on how to remove the debris. But what we've done in the past is offer it up to contractors, they can place, you know, tree rounds in the right-of-way or in specific areas for the public to pick up. So that's something that we've been successful in the past and hoping we can do that for this project. Just generally, what we're proposing to do is within the 15 feet off the edge of the roadway is kind of where the work would occur. So the proposal is to remove, in the first 10 feet, remove all the trees and brush. And then, in the next five feet, really just remove the trees that are a lot smaller than 14 inches in diameter. And then, if there's any tree limbs that are overhanging within that 15 foot, trim them up and remove any additional tree limbs above 15 feet off the ground for any tree branches that extend beyond the edge of the pavement. So that's our general kind of guidelines we were going to follow. I will note that this is more aggressive than what we've done in previous projects along the right-of-way. Generally, we have some guidelines. It says we usually clear about the six foot from the edge of the travel, the edge of the pavement, cutting down trees. So this is a little bit more aggressive. But we came up with these standards, working with Tahoe Donner and the Cal Fire and Truckee Fire. So we think this is going to result in sort of a good balance. And this is just the three areas that we are kind of, that each being 20, that we, 20 miles generally that we would put out to bid in three separate contracts. So in order to get this work done, we are proposing to use Truckee Special Service Area Funds. These are funds that are collected, there's basically assessment, all the parcels in Tahoe Donner. It's $70 per undeveloped parcel and 95 per developed. And they're, to be used on specific uses, one of which is road maintenance. So we think it's an appropriate use of these funds. The, we have, as I mentioned, we've had some discussions with Truckee Fire District and the Tahoe Donner Homeowners Association. And I believe we have some folks in the audience, representatives from those agencies that have been waiting patiently to maybe make some public comment. So they are in the audience. And then, we do propose that we'd work with them to do some outreach before we start this project to make sure that people know what's going on and the reasons and what to expect. So we've done these projects before, and we sort of have some general outreach that we've done. But I think working closely with Tahoe Donners, the Tahoe Donner Homeowners Association will be important. And I think they have a lot of, they've got a lot of good ways for us to contact the residents in that area. So with that, and sorry for the speed, but with the, given the hour, I thought I'd kind of whiz through that a little bit. The recommendation is that the council create a new Tahoe Donner right-of-way vegetation removal CIP in the amount of $1 million in the fiscal year 1920 budget, using TSSA 1 funds.
Excellent job, Becky. Thank you. Are the, this, the Tahoe Donner representatives part of the, do you want them to present now or during public comments?
Public comments, probably fine.
Public comments, fine? Great. Thank you. Great. Opening this up for council member questions, starting with council member commendatory.
I think the only question I have, which is just more of a clarification, that this is, the money's already there. This is not anything new, and it's just applying it to this use, correct?
Right. I think, I think the staff report mentioned there is about $5 million balance right now.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Klobstad?
No, I think staff did a great job answering my questions already. Thank you.
Council member Abrams?
Could you give me a little bit of an idea why if we've typically cleared six feet from the roadway, what's the difference or what's the impact that clearing 10 feet is going to have? Like, is that a substantial difference in safety or fire prevention? What's...
I'm not, so this is sort of something that we worked out with, with talking with some of the other stakeholders. I think part of it is going out and recognizing that there's benefits to the right-of-way, but also benefits to fire, extending it. That additional four feet was sort of kind of, is being more driven by the additional benefit you would get for the fire, for fire purposes, just having that additional width. But perhaps maybe some other folks that are here can comment on that a little further.
I can comment just from something that Dan Wilkins passed on to me, we've been talking about over the last couple of weeks. The six foot was always a bit of a, I would say, kind of a compromise number. The road crew would have proposed a little bit wider, but the recognition of the balance between aesthetics, trees, road width, kind of six is where they ended up. But, you know, 10 gives, you know, both the road maintenance and snow and fire a little bit more room.
Thank you, Becky. No questions. Thank you, members of the public who've been so patient as to wait for us to get to this agenda item. If you have some comment to make, please step up to the podium, state your name, fill out a speaker card in the back. Chief Saleen, take it away.
Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. My name is Bill Saleen, Fire Chief, Truckee Fire Protection District. I'm here with Chief Farrell with Cal Fire. We want to speak in support briefly for this Tahoe Donner vegetation fuels reduction project. Of course, wildfire continues to be on the front of people's minds following the most disastrous wildfire years in California history. Unfortunately, there's not one silver bullet that will reduce the likelihood of a disastrous wildfire in Truckee, but instead doing a number of things that will add up to reduce the risk. And one of those things, we believe, is this project. The Fire District, over time, has been supportive and encouraging of reduction of fuels and vegetation along our roads. Most recently, we had a joint OES grant two or three years ago that we're waiting to hear back on, on 35 miles of Truckee roads, that we worked jointly with the town to prepare. We're, last December, we again worked jointly with the town on a large Cal Fire grant that includes fuel reduction along evacuation egress routes in Truckee. And Bob Womack was instrumental in that with our forester and others. We actually just heard back in the last day that we received $1.5 million of that. So there is more work that can be done, and there's some matching of the effort that we hope that you all will take and approve tonight. You know, just quickly, there are four main reasons why I think this is an important project that enhances wildfire safety for the community. First, reducing vegetation along the roads can reduce the intensity of a fire, and I think that's probably obvious. It'll improve people's ability to get out of a community in evacuation scenario, and also improve the ability of fire crews to get in when there is less vegetation on the side of the road that's on fire. The second reason is roads, as Becky pointed out, can act as a fuel break, a place where firefighters could make a stand against a fire. Widening the fuel break just makes sense. It's, makes it a better possibility to use it as a fire break. Third, of course, Cal Fire reports 95% of fires are caused by people. So it makes sense, I think, to all of us that many fires are started along roads. Reducing vegetation reduces the likelihood of a fire start on the edge of a road. And if one does start, it will most likely remain smaller, give fire crews a chance to get some time to get there and extinguish that fire before it gets big. Lastly, we've all heard how we live in this overgrown forest, you know, so taking this opportunity to reduce fuels on lands controlled by the town is good. It's efficient fire force, forest health business, I think. Tahoe Donner, of course, has proven their willingness to reduce fuel and improve fire safety over many years. And this project, I think, will dovetail in their efforts to reduce this continuity of fuels in the area. You know, this is sort of where the rubber meets the road, right? These are the decisions that, you know, we talk about, sounds good. We're going to reduce fuels. But if you, you know, think about, sorry, that threw me off. Anyway, thank you very much.
It worked, chief. It worked. Finally, the buzzer worked on somebody. Man, we've been waiting years for that. Thank you, Chief Saleen.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Annie Rosenfeld, and I'm the Director of Risk Management and Real Property for Tahoe Donner Association. I'm currently one of the transition team members who's performing and acting as the functionary general, interim General Manager for Tahoe Donner Association. So I'm here to speak on this matter. So thank you for the opportunity, and thanks to the town for giving the heads up that this is coming forward and that we've been able to participate. I'll try and be on time. I'm used to presenting as staff. So Tahoe Donner Board has not had the opportunity to formally discuss this project, but have a meeting scheduled March 28th where this project will be discussed with town staff in relation to the expenditure of the TSSA 1 funds. That being said, the fire hazard mitigation and emergency preparation is the number one priority for the Board of Tahoe Donner. Prior discussion and advocacy at the town level with staff, town, or Tahoe Donner staff and our board on this type of project has been one of the elements that we've identified for improvement. Therefore, the Board has been in supportive of this type of scoping of project. We've been requesting it, and many of the residents in the neighborhood have requested it. This mess, this project sends a message to the greater part of the community and the visitors of Tahoe Donner. As you know, most of Tahoe Donner is a second home community. Much of the second, or the short-term rentals are in Tahoe Donner. And continued efforts and reminders of maintenance and the role that we all play at fire hazard mitigation is one important factor for you to consider. Prioritization of funding for fire preparation and resiliency is part of your role and as a, as taxpaying of Tahoe Donner and of the community. I also love hearing that you all are resolved to take on the benefit of the greater community as opposed to singular agendas. This project will require that resolve, as we will, the town staff and the contractors will be removing trees in people's yards. That intersection between right-of-way and people's property in Tahoe Donner is a, is an area that needs to be addressed and that people tend to not do their defensible space in that area and use the right-of-way as their bailout. I want to just, a couple key stats hit on, I'm running out of time. 50% of the total residences in the town?
Take an extra minute.
Okay. 50% of the total of residents in Towne and Truckee are Tahoe Donner. Of the 164 miles of road, 41% of those miles are Tahoe Donner. So you're addressing a major... So, you're addressing a major proportion of the town roads and the fire hazard mitigation with this project. Couple final things here. We are offering to assist with the town to do resident communication through our extensive communication outreach tools and staffing, and we'll be able to reach well over 9,000 emails and 92% of our membership just in email blasts alone. Specific to the funding, the funding on this project right now is proposed 100% of TSSA-1 funds. As Chief Saleen just indicated, the fire department was awarded a $1.5 million grant, and each of the entities that participated in that grant have a certain percentage that we're going to be allotted, certain percentage of that goes to the town. Tahoe Donner is asking that if appropriate and available, that the appropriate percentage of those grant funds relative to the rest of the town is applied to this project if it can be, or some kind of refunding to the TSSA-1 funds as applicable. Finally, the one question that we had, and our forester, Bill Hollidysell, is here and can answer any questions. We are requesting that the tree rounds and the chipping do not go onto the properties. The PUD did a similar tree removal project last year, and the rounds became a problem. They become a fire hazard if they're not picked up. You would think that people want to keep that wood for burning, but what it ends up becoming is a punky wood. It deteriorates in the front of their yard, or they put it into their property and it sits there and becomes a fire hazard. So, that would be one of our requests in the project. With that, thank you for letting me run over.
Thanks so much, Annie.
Hello, Mayor, council members. My name is Doug Coulter. Some of you might remember I was here last meeting advocating exactly this project. The only wish was that it started in Glen Shire, where I live, at 14889 Nelson Street. However, Tahoe Donner is unique, is that I think, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, the right-of-way is 60 feet, and in Glen Shire, it's 50. So, as far as I'm concerned, you can go past the 10 feet and not really encroach on anybody's property in Tahoe Donner. And 10 feet is more than adequate in Glen Shire, as far as I'm concerned. You can remove all the trees, no size limit, just take them out of the right-of-way. Anything under the power lines, take them out, because they just grow over the road when you cut the tops off. So, I'm 100% in favor of this. I'm really glad that you're looking, that you're taking on this project, and I fully support it.
Thanks, Doug. We'll come to Glen Shire as soon as we can.
Okay. I'm ready.
Hello, good evening. I'm your local CAL FIRE Battalion Chief, Brian Farrell, also a longtime local resident. I just want to provide some validation to what has been said with Chief Saleen. I'll go back to 1991 at the Oakland Hills Fire. The number-one challenge we had was ingress. Everybody was trying to get out, and we trained the public to yield to the right, but when flame and pinjment was moving in on their vehicles, they have no place to yield, so they go to the center where traditionally we ingress in for the firefighting. We've learned over time, the fire service, how to make those corrections, but I was on the campfire, had the same issue. We actually had to use a bulldozer to push vehicles out of a jam to get people out of the community. So, it's an ongoing challenge. I've been the boots on the ground on the roads, not being able to hold the road and being able to hold the road. Most recently, at the Kincaid Fire, I was the operations chief in charge, and we preemptively evacuated 200,000 people because we identified the fact we could not safely evacuate them in distress because of roadway width, overgrown roadways, flow of traffic, and the ingress we needed for the firefighting equipment. So, it is imperative to widen these roads. This is the opportunity. We have the public trust right now in that they see it does make a difference. It improves the community. It improves not only for the fire suppression, but in the winter, when we damage the right-of-way trees, it becomes fuel. And if you are or are not familiar, ladder fuels are the fuels from the ground up that get a fire from a ground fire that is easily extinguishable into a crown fire or a tree fire that spreads through entire communities. And we saw that on the Kincaid Fire, we saw that on the campfire, and we continue to see it repeated. So, this is a proactive measure that is a visual improvement, it is a functional improvement, it is a public safety improvement, and there really is no detrimental side to that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other public comment on this issue? Seeing none, closing public comments, and bringing it back to council for any deliberation and/or a motion?
Well, I'll start.
Please.
One thing that was not mentioned in anyone's presentation, that this is not true with all insurance carriers, but it's becoming a larger part of whether carriers are staying on homeowners' policies or not. So, this is a step in the right way to help reduce those few carriers who are using that as an excuse to cancel or non-renew policies, which therefore helps our community. So, from that measure as well, it's a very important thing. As far as the width and, you know, 10 feet, six feet, I think it's 10 feet. I think it's a no-brainer. I think it's, this is a very, very simple request and a simple decision, so.
I will just say ditto. I agree completely. That was the one point I wanted to make as well, that I think it could also help mitigate some of the fire insurance cancellations that we're experiencing. I just had a heartfelt email this week about that specific issue, and absolutely 10 feet and the five feet of limbing up from there, I'm in full support. And let's try and do it other places, too.
I actually just have maybe a quick clarifying question for Annie, and that is, did you say you were bringing it to the Tahoe Donner Board for an approval, an action, or just as an informational item?
It'll be an informational item, with the town, Becky and Dan covering that, that those will be expenditures that hopefully the council approves as a project, a CIP project for this year, and then the next fiscal year. It depends on how you pay for this, whether it spans two fiscal years, right?
Yeah. I think the staff recommendation is to put it into this budget, and then if, and hoping that we would get all the work done, but we would have to adjust the budget if it expanded to the next fiscal year.
Generally, they're in favor, and with the surplus in the TSSA-1 funds, it seems like an appropriate measure, but they will be looking for, knowing this grant, that whether we can leverage that for...
Separate conversation. But they're not going to necessarily be taking action, yea or nay, on this item?
No. And ultimately, they know that it's town council's prerogative to spend those TSSA-1 funds, and they appreciate the ability to weigh in on that.
Great. Thank you.
I do just have one last thing. I have great trust in what Tahoe Donner can do in terms of outreach and publicizing about this. I would also implore our town staff to do our own efforts as well, because I think we have more people than just the Tahoe Donner residents that visit that community, and they're going to see this activity, and I think probably have a whole range of reactions, and we want to get out ahead of that and make sure people understand all of the benefits that we just talked about here, and hopefully create an opportunity for expanding this into the rest of the community.
Good point. Thank you. Councilmember Abrams?
Yeah, I think it makes complete sense. We've really talked quite a bit about supporting and maintaining the safety of our community, and so this offers an opportunity to really be proactive about that and in understanding. I, it makes sense once you explain why we need the 10 feet instead of six feet. It's logical. I just don't, I don't know what I don't know sometimes, so it was really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Councilmember Tierman?
I agree with you all. This is a critically important mitigation project, and great to be proactive about it, so totally support this.
Great. How about you provide us with a motion, please?
Okay. I move that we create the Tahoe Donner Right-of-Way Vegetation Removal CIP in the amount of $1 million in the fiscal year 1920 budget.
Nice second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. Motion passes. Thank you. Yeah, right. Applause. You go. Thanks for, thanks for being patient with us as well. So, 7.3, you ready to go? Let's go. Let's do it. We're still on schedule. Trying, shooting for, who's doing, who's doing 7.4? Becky?
Uh...
Oh, Hillary, sorry. Never mind. Okay. Hillary. We're going to be quick, right? Yeah. We're doing 7.3 right now. We're going to stay on agenda and try to just stay on point, don't repeat what we all say. If you have something to add, please do, and we'll keep it moving. How about that? Just be clear about that.
This is the general plan update status check-in. I'm not going to say anymore. I'm just, just helping out. It's one, one thing for us. Anyway, appreciate the opportunity to talk about general plan update. Lots going on. We're just going to give you the bare bones. You've got a lot of data kind of in front of you in written form, and as soon as it comes up, then Danielle will tell you what you got.
Sorry, did you think I was going to skip over you? Sorry. Oh, you did? Sorry. I was trying to stay on agenda.
That's okay. I mean, we're adaptable, right? Works for us, so. I did throw together some slides just so that we can show the viewers at home, too, what's been happening with the general plan update. So, as a reminder, even though we're calling it the general plan update, it still includes the downtown-specific plan update, and then we also threw in the climate action plan work because we really just wanted to pile it on at the same time. Really, it's just because we understood that the community has all these interests, and it was time to really do that level of work. So, although it seems kind of monumental to compile it all together, there's really a lot of benefit and overlap in having these topics integrated. So, when we're doing workshops, we're doing outreach, we're talking about general plan, we're able to talk about policies kind of within all these three levels at the same time. So, it's been, it's been good, but it's a lot of work. So, when did we start all of this? Well, if you think back to August, that's when we kicked off. Council said, yeah, let's go ahead and take this on, because our general plan from 2006 was starting to, it's working, but definitely missing some things that the community had as current expectations. And as part of that, we wanted to have robust public involvement and created the general plan advisory committee as one component of that. So, 16-member committee, different backgrounds, different stakeholders, kind of a variety of community perspectives to do a lot of the heavy lifting on behalf of the community. So, we have them working hard. We also knew we were going to do a variety of workshops, pop-up events. We created a specific website that we, at least early on, were using more diligently for surveys, and we'll get back into that. And then, working with a variety of community partners in different aspects. In the middle of all that, we kind of set out this plan, and I thought this was just a helpful graphic to see. These were the major milestone tasks that when we went out looking for a consultant, we knew we had a lot of work to do, so we wanted to make sure that they were going to give us a program that was achievable. And we hired a scent environmental, and this is sort of what they put together for us of, yeah, we're going to kick it off, we're going to do some really heavy background work in our existing conditions report. We're going to poll the community and do some kind of self-assessment about what we think are potential issues we would want to address in that next 20-year timeframe. So, with that 2040 general plan, is our vision still working? What are we missing? You know, do we need to change our land use alternatives? What does that look like? How do we package our goals and policies? What sort of development options are within that? Yes, downtown-specific plan, sort of a separate component, but not the environmental document encompassing all of that. And then, what I didn't have was a separate bubble here for the climate action work, but that's because it's really integrated into all of these things together, and then eventually adoption. So, the yellow star represents sort of where we're at right now in the planning process, and I'll go into a little bit more detail to kind of talk about, you know, why we're at this point. And there's a lot of moving parts, so hopefully, as I talk this through, it kind of makes more sense. What I thought was helpful is to talk about the things that actually have happened in that timeframe already that are available for the community to look at still and provide comments on. So, the first one was the existing conditions report, and that was a 406-page background document that was prepared by the consultant with assistance from staff and review by staff so that we could really understand the community's baseline. A lot of that work will go into the setting portion of the EIR, so it's robust. And because of that, Jenna put together what we call the briefing book, so it's a condensed 60-page version of that, and we still have some, you know, fine-tuning of that to do to make sure it's completely accurate to match up with the existing conditions report, but it's on our list. And we do, like I said, have that available on the Truckee 2040 website. But we put G-PAC to work, and thankfully, G-PAC wanted to work, so they put in a lot of effort and had a lot more interest in meeting than we originally anticipated, so that kind of took on a life of its own, and we were adaptive and responsive to that. The bulk of the work that they've done so far is really creating that draft vision, some draft principles and draft goals, which were included in your staff report. While this was going on, we also had to update our housing element because it's on a different cycle than the general plan, so we spent a lot of time doing House Truckee first workshops. We did some in Spanish, which was kind of a first for us. We, you know, got it done by the August deadline that the state gave us, even though we only had eight months to do it, which is pretty remarkable. So, we have one element down that's done and adopted. We may choose to go back in and add some policy modifications or things through the rest of this process, so even though it's adopted, it doesn't mean that it has to be the only version that we have, because things might come up as we start continuing through this general plan update. But at least it's one thing that's in place that we're using already. And then, sort of the climate action plan work that's been going on, so we've got the general plan advisory committee kind of subgroup that's working on that. We also have the vulnerability task force because of a grant that Nick got. So, there's all these sort of, you know, webs kind of happening all at the same time to ensure that we are getting the public involved, that we're moving forward on creating the policies within the general plan, and ensuring that we can finish this, because that's the goal, right? We want to get it adopted. During the middle of that, council kind of decided that we should also do a market study in part because we just didn't have a great assessment of what was happening with our non-residential land in the community, and so we brought that to council in February and got some, you know, discussion going, and we'll continue to use that as we move forward in the general plan update. So, it's not that because we brought it to council, we're done in any capacity with that. It's a tool, as we had talked about, for us to talk about the next phases that we're going to, which is the land use alternatives. So, those are some of our successes. I think a big success, though, really starts with the vision statement, because for Truckee that, when we went through the last general plan update, I'm not really sure we changed much other than a couple of words, and so G-PAC members created a subcommittee to keep working on this vision because it was so important to make sure that we're capturing who we are and what we're going to look like in 20 years. The one thing I will note about the difference between what's in our 2025 general plan and this draft version that G-PAC supported, is that the kind of small mountain town, the word "small" is no longer in here. So, that is, it's a difference, right? We're still a mountain community, but that's one of the things that they kind of focused on and talked about, that really, there was no way to define it clearly that everyone could agree to, so the idea was, let's just take it out. But I think the other things that are important are sort of the addition of arts and culture, because that's really come out in the forefront of the community to kind of add that in there. And the word comprehensive, so comprehensive network of multi-use trails and transportation solutions, that's really about connectivity, and that wasn't expressed the same in our current vision statement, but is definitely core to our community right now. Every workshop we have, every discussion we have about general plan really talks about connection, connected communities, connected trails, making sure, you know, downtown is the connected heart of the community. All those things are sort of wrapped into this vision statement.
But even though the word "small" is out there, it's 80 words instead of two pages, which was a major victory.
Jeff is very proud of the fact that it's condensed, and, I mean, I think there's something to be said about that, that we didn't need to be that wordy to kind of express who we are as a community, and so to really package it and get it down into the core of what we are really makes it more successful, because frankly, people are more likely to read it if it's at that really succinct level. So, that was a conscious effort on G-PAC's part, and I think pretty successful for them to come up with that draft vision. As we move into the future and we have more workshops and stuff, we will bring all of the work that G-PAC's done with us to those workshops, so people have it, and like I said, it's on the Truckee 2040 website, but we'll just keep getting it out there. What are some other things that they've done? Well, they sorted through all of the guiding principles. So, the way that the 2025 general plan is structured right now is that we have guiding principles, we, you know, we have the vision, guiding principles, we have goals, and we have actions. And what we found is that the guiding principles were often just duplications of goals, just sort of packaged at the beginning of each element. And so, there was interest, again, in sort of being succinct and consolidating. So, what they did with a lot of these principles is they just either got rid of them because it's already a goal, or packaged them to put at the front of the general plan kind of... it's already a goal, or packaged them to put at the front of the general plan kind of right with the vision statement so that it's very clear, sort of, these are the core things that Trekey is and want to be between now and Trekey in 2040. So I think that's, again, you know, just this work of grinding through that G-PAC gets to do with all their meetings where they're just sorting through, you know, very technical information in the general plan, but making it so that it's accessible for the community. Eventually, if we adopt those, then that'll be pretty successful. What I did here is just shows some kind of examples of some of the draft principles. Some of the things that carried through with G-PAC from the current general plan are, you know, maintaining Trekey's authenticity, sense of place, high emphasis on relying on our natural environment, so reducing impacts. But what's new, and this is why I say we're going through a general plan update process, is we don't have a lot in our current general plan about climate change at all. And it's just a reflection of the times when we were preparing the current, the 2025 general plan. So there is a very big difference in what we see with the work coming out of G-PAC that the emphasis is much more on housing, much more on connectivity, and much more on greenhouse gas emission reduction. And so that's coming forward in the principles that they've put together in their draft form. And the same is also true for the goals, that some of the same similarities, you know, natural resources, but then taking it to a next level. We had some language about reducing auto-dependency, but now it's sort of, well, why don't we just even go further and say lessen the need for newer expanded roads? So that's sort of G-PAC's impact that they're having in this discussion about what we have in our current general plan versus the 2040 version they would like to see. And then this last one again was just kind of another one they added specific to climate change. And so that's carried throughout all the different versions that you have. We didn't give you a comparison kind of version in part because it's just so much stuff got moved around that it wouldn't have made a lot of sense, but just know that really the essentials that are in the current general plan did make it in and then got added to. What about the downtown specific plan? Pretty major effort. It's from 1997 and has served us well, but is definitely missing some things. We've done a river revitalization strategy since that time, which isn't reflected in there. We've adopted the railroad master plan, also not really reflected in there. And things have just changed in that amount of timeframe, that there's still cross-sections in there of streets that we now have sidewalks on, so it's just outdated. So what we've done is we've given the consultants a complete audit, you know, take this out, remove this, add this, here's what's missing, so they have all of that. We did a visioning workshop. We've done one more recent one that we kind of tag teamed with Kelly and Dan Schop to do the transit feasibility study workshop where we kind of talked about the relationship about if we're gonna create a new transit center or, you know, build off the existing one that we have, how does that kind of integrate into the general plan update process? How does that integrate into the downtown specific plan update process? So that there's sort of that web I've been talking about of integration of all these things that the town is working on at the same time. G-PAC has also spent some time talking, at least at a more land use level about downtown, so we just finished that, was that last week, where we'd been talking about sort of land use alternatives in different focus groups, and downtown was one of those focus groups. And again, going back to connectivity, you know, crossing over the railroad tracks was really important, making sure that we had wayfinding signage so that people could understand where all of our trails are, you know, how do you get from the regional park over to Trout Creek Trail? And how do you get people to understand where they can park their bikes and things like that? So they were really thinking at that very high level and providing feedback for us to use when we go into our next workshop. We are hoping through all these efforts and the workshops that we're gonna do to have a draft version of the specific plan by October. So that's our target. For climate action plan, and Jeff, you can always chime in if you would like, Jeff's been kind of taking the lead on this, but, you know, we've had two kind of groups working on this between the vulnerability task force group and the G-PAC subcommittee, but we've also just had a substantial amount of public interest. So most of those meetings have had a lot of public engagement. We've had a lot of the agencies kind of interact. We've had some really dynamic discussions that, we've had great workshops with a lot of public involvement to kind of package this information and come up with some draft policies, which is where we're at now. But a lot of public engagement, you know, specific to climate action again is a reflection of what the community thinks is important for this next general plan update. Next steps. I rarely do these sort of little outbursts, but it just seemed so, so relevant for this. We've heard counsel loud and clear, more, more, more type of outreach to the community, but also different. And so we are focusing on that, that we have a communications committee that's formed within our town staff to help us, the planners who are working on this, be able to do that additional level of outreach, whether it's through social media, having some additional focus group meetings that we're doing, whether they're geographic or they're sort of interest-based, to be able to advertise things sooner, do more survey options for people who can't attend meetings. I mean, we may get forced into that discussion anyway about how we, how we would be able to do public engagement and not have people in a room. So we're looking at all of those different options to make sure that that happens in that fashion that the councils asked us to do. So what's really, really coming next are two G-PAC-sponsored workshops. So we have started the work on these. The March 26 one will be here at Town Hall for the downtown specific plan update. I wish I could have said that it was gonna be downtown, but we didn't want to conflict with the Follies. So that was sort of the, the timeframes of what we were looking at. And then beyond that, the April 30 workshop would be for land use alternatives. So the ideas with all of these workshops, though, is that even though they have a topic that we're still gonna have staff members present who can, if someone just wants to come and they don't really understand where we're at in the process, they will have someone to just use as a resource to be able to talk anything that they want. They don't have to be focused on just what the topic of the workshop is. And we're bringing in for these workshops to more town staff, so we'll have better overlap. Kelly will be attending to talk about transit. We'll have someone from engineering to be able to talk about all the different street-scape projects that are being considered and contemplated downtown. Hillary will help with our Westriver site. So what we're really trying to do is just make it easier for people that will just be more accessible in one kind of location and then be able to take how those workshops work and turn them into online surveys so that we can still get the same type of information but from a different diverse group of people. Whoops, stuck. I'm almost done. Big picture, where are we at? So the workshops are kind of the next big thing, and then we have other ones that we're scheduling out in the mix too, but we kind of wanted to see just based on how tonight's discussion with council overall was gonna go before we get too far down the road. We do have a master schedule that we gave you as sort of the updated version. It's pretty aggressive. It still gets us around a three-year finish timeframe, which is a good target. That's still very good for a general plan update, but it does require a lot more legwork on the staff's part to be able to kind of balance doing some stuff that we wouldn't normally do at the same time. And we're prepared to do that, we have more staff, we have a strategy in place, so that's gonna happen. But really, you know, the public's gonna be interested in talking about, you know, these draft versions of things and, you know, when are those coming? And how do we participate? How do we provide comments? I'm looking at Pat because I'm counting on you to provide those, Pat. The draft documents we're targeting for sort of fall 2020. And then, you know, they'll have to go through several versions of that, so that's why you see sort of this lag in timeframe, but ultimately with a November 2021 adoption. And then be able to move forward into sort of the implementation phase. So I'll leave you with this last slide, I know Jeff wants to say some stuff, but this is really just an overview presentation for the community and council to see what's been happening with the general plan, where it's going, and for you to provide any sort of additional direction you want to staff.
Just to add two very quick things, just a big thank you to G-PAC and, and all the other people who've been involved, and some of our members are here. And also recognize Councilmember Tierman and Vice Mayor Clovstad who've been going to all of those meetings and many of the climate action plan meetings and climate vulnerability meetings as well, because there've been a lot of them. And then finally, to not be Darrell or Donald Downer, but I hope the COVID-19 conversation we had earlier will not impact some of these really exciting workshop-y things. If it does, we'll do more remotely. I mean, we'll go more online, more digital, more survey, more go-to meeting, whatever it takes, but we just have to be realistic. That could be a bump in the road that could happen, you know, unfortunate timing, we'll see. Anyway, if, you can comment on anything. If I had a suggestion, it would be sort of the vision and goals, or kind of, that's kind of the key product that right now, it's kind of, it's not done 100%, but it's, we're not gonna do anything with it for a while. So that, that'd be a good thing to, you know, comment on generally.
Good. Thank you. Great presentation. Thanks to G-PAC members in the audience. Thanks to Councilmember Tierman and Vice Mayor Clovstad. All thanks are out of the way. We don't have to have five more thanks as we go through that. Just took care of that for you guys. Any initial questions on what we're seeing? We'll go back to you. We started at that end last time. Councilmember Tierman?
Just maybe comment. There may be an opportu, I don't know if it's too late, but March 26, there may be an opportunity to go back downtown. Okay, are you aware of that? Yeah, they're getting postponed, but. Yeah, no, no questions from me. Just comment that, you know, the, the process has been very organic but structured, which is good. And I've been, I shouldn't say surprised, but very happy that the G-PAC has been very engaged all along. There was, there were some predictions that there would be attrition over time, but that absolutely has not been the case. The, the full committee's been there, many members of the public who are here tonight are, have also been in attendance on a very consistent basis. So good process, more to come. I will have one specific comment. I don't know if this is the time now or...
You have it, go for it.
Yeah, okay.
Just keep going.
All right, okay. Yeah, so my only comment, and it relates to the downtown specific plan, I think it was just a mention in the staff report about H-PAC serving as a recommending, recommending body on the specific plan downtown, and G-PAC being sort of the review or opportunity to review. And I guess in my mind, I was envisioning the opposite because G-PAC is, you know, a wider range of the community already engaged in the whole land use discussion. And it sort of felt like me that that would be kind of G-PAC's role to continue in the same vein with the overall blueprint of the community, with the downtown specific plan, and certainly having H-PAC, you know, as part of it to augment it, but not necessarily H-PAC to take the lead, only because their, their focus is typically on design, you know, design review of specific buildings and homes, whereas G-PAC's been very engaged in the whole land use discussion townwide. And I, I guess I don't see why that wouldn't continue with the downtown specific plan. So that was my, just an observation for, for consideration.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Clovstad?
Nope, I'm good, I'm living it.
I just have one simple question. I don't know, what's the status? I know there was one vacant spot for a small business. Has there been any success or finding someone to replace? I think it was Bag, but it was there.
It's on our radar. We just have not had the time as of right now to kind of go back through a process to bring that back to council, but Jenna's looking at that.
Okay. Let me know if I can help.
My question is just about, I guess what we didn't see tonight was that expanded process. So, you know, one thing, I think I heard from Jeff, what you just said was, you know, more surveys, more online. I mean, personally, I think that's great, less in-person, go more to that direction to hit people at their convenience when they want to on their own time, not making them show up from six to eight on a Thursday night or whatever night that was. So, you know, to me, they're, they're equal in terms of, of how we attack that, but what I, what I still kind of didn't see here, and maybe you're coming back to us in a few weeks or a month or so, is, is really what does that look like? What is that priority that we put in place as that outreach strategy look like other than the next 30 days, which, which you did show us, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll try to bring something back. I mean, we've got some ideas, and now that planning's at full staff, it, it's a lot easier to envision getting a lot of that stuff done.
Anything to add? Yeah.
So behind the scenes, you know, as I mentioned last time, we've cut our counter hours, so the planning staff are available from eight to noon. So the idea is to take blocks of time so that the planners can all focus on the general plan, so we'll have a greater diversity of staff working on the general plan specifically for public engagement. One of our newest hires, Ally Balisteros, just passed her test for fluency in Spanish. So that's also another added bonus that we have to be able to kind of throw into this discussion and be able to do, like I said, surveys, but we can now do them easier because we can do in Spanish and English, we can do, we just have greater diversity. We also have the ability to focus on the general plan by dedicating that time. So we are tasked with the staff writing the policy, which is kind of a beast in itself, but I think in this strategy that we've created, we'll be able to get them kind of focusing on the public engagement portion, to be able to use that information to write the policy, and it'll make it easier. So that's already in the works. We've scheduled that out sort of internally, and that's the stuff I didn't put in the staff report that you don't see but is actually happening.
Great. Thanks, Danielle. Thanks, Jeff. Open this item for public comment. Anybody wishing to adjust this item, come on up.
Heather Rancow, thank you, Town Mayor and staff and council. I want to say thank you to staff for all their work in G-PAC thus far. First, I'd like to express my concern in scheduling of key meetings. I know it's in a public comment out kind of last, with, last week with the stacking of meetings. I'd like to see future meetings not scheduled all at the same time as other planning meetings, as this divides the community across these meetings, is not provide key community input. I'm also really concerned that the affordable housing subcommittee for G-PAC has been, whether it's disbanded or on hold, while the land use alternatives and residential density across various areas across town are currently in discussion at G-PAC. Affordable housing is the council, is one of the council's key priorities, and we have a very engaged G-PAC doing a lot of heavy lifting. With previous successful subcommittees such as the vision and climate action subcommittee, we need to have an affordable housing subcommittee looking at how this topic is affected across the board as the general plan is updated. I'd like to propose that G-PAC brings back the affordable housing subcommittee and that this action be taken at the next G-PAC meeting. I'd also like to request that the G-PAC meetings and any subcommittee meetings be noted on the town calendar, if not already done so. I'd also like a cancellation and notification policy put in G-PAC, in place for G-PAC. I'd also like to see a three to four-month look ahead for key G-PAC-related meetings, workshops, so that all G-PAC members can effectively schedule their times so that G-PAC meetings can be well-attended. I'd also like to note that G-PAC meetings where a public facilitator has been leading the meetings has been very successful, so thank you so much for doing that. It's been a huge help. I think also to the downtown staff to really focus on their jobs and not always just communicating in the meetings. So where the facilitator has been present, it's been really great. I'd also like to request for staff to provide a guideline to filling any of the current vacancies, both as a timeline and a follow-up procedure for what they should do and how long they should wait before those vacancies come back to council to be filled. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Prior to the meeting, Pat. Prior to the meeting. Come on, you're not a rookie here. Sheesh. Okay, let's go. Sure I can.
Thank you so much. Good evening. What a night. All right, my name is Pat Davison with the Contractors Association of Trekey Tahoe. I am not going through all of this, I just wanted to give you something in writing. We'll hit a couple of highlights, but first of all, wanted to explain what's going on from our membership's perspective. We have basically mirrored what's happening with G-PAC and the subcommittee. So we have a land use subcommittee, we have a climate subcommittee, and following what's happening through our membership. Why are CAP members getting involved? Because they understand, after hearing me say it over and over and over, how important this general plan update is. There are plans, programs, policies, and actions in the current general plan that affect virtually everything that happens in construction in this town, and we see the importance of the general plan update from the same perspective. Somewhere or another, those plans, actions, and policies will affect construction going forward, not just next year, but could be 10 or 15 years from now. So our members are getting involved at the grassroots level, it's the future of their families and their industry. We've had at least one member at every meeting, and at some... We've had at least one member at every meeting, and at some meetings, we've had four members. So, a couple of them are in the room here tonight. But anyway, back to the points here. Wanted to just bring up a couple of procedural concerns. Heather touched on it, the fact that there's no small business representative on G-PAC. That's a position to represent up to five employees. We respectfully request that you consider filling that position before the April 30th workshop. Why that date? Because that's when discussion starts on the preferred alternatives. Note in the staff report that by July, G-PAC will be selecting the preferred alternative. Then it goes to Planning Commission and Town Council. So, we're thinking it's really important that you have that small business rep there. Fulfill the intent of having diverse voices involved, and look at that April 30th deadline. Vacancy procedure, I went back and looked. There's some direction from your September 10th, 2019, meeting about how to fill vacancies. We think there's some questions of how to apply that, but also maybe we're not waiting for two vacancies to happen. Maybe we use a 60 or 90-day timeframe. Again, big decisions will be happening in the next few months. Let's try and take care of those vacancies. The other comment is regarding the market demand analysis for non-residential and then the residential rezone. G-PAC doesn't have those, hasn't been presented, let me rephrase that, hasn't been presented to G-PAC. We think those are really important documents to include in the discussion about land use alternatives. So maybe there could be some reordering of the schedule so that G-PAC gets those documents and is able to use them in their comments. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat.
Councilmembers and mayor and vice mayor, my name is Jake Hudson. I'm a local engineer in town. However, tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe. And as much as we really appreciate your effort to involve more or have more public involvement in the process, CAT requests a cancellation procedure be put in place for the canceling of meetings. One meeting was canceled kind of last minute, and it matters to people who are coming from out of town or wherever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jake.
I'm Jan Zabriski. I'm on the G-PAC along with the others. If you'd look at anything, I'd like you to look at the next-to-last page of the staff presentation. This page is the 20th page. You don't need to look at it right now, but if you want to, it's fine. That has a little section down there that says what has changed and what is missing. I think it's really important to reflect on that, because the more I read the 2006 general plan, the better I thought it was, which made me realize where the focus ought to be is on what has changed and how do we address that. And two of the things that stand out for me, among the things that are listed there, is the additional planned communities we have now. We have Gray's Crossing, Old Greenwood, Soaring Ranches underway, as well as Coldstream. That is contributing to the sense among many community members that Truckee is becoming segmented, as it becomes geographically segmented by planned communities. There's that sense. The other thing contributing to that is the increasing percentage of vacation homes in the community, and then just the increasing tourist traffic. So, people are, residents are seeing more strangers over the course of a day. And that little section already mentions the increase in STRs within communities. It makes people feel a little disjointed. And this all relates now to what is missing, because one of the items already listed there for what is missing is community health. And that's a sense of not well-being, not feeling as well as otherwise. And then that brings me to talking about housing, transportation, and climate change, because those are the specific topics that really weren't anticipated enough by the 2006 general plan, and now are the main topics that do need to be changed. And the reason I mention those is because we do need the community outreach. All three of these things, climate change, housing, and traffic, are going to require change among residents. And residents are going to have to be vested in the decisions that the council makes in adopting the general plan. And the way to get the buy-in is to go see them in place. If we're going to try to reduce traffic going along Donner Lake by putting a park-and-ride lot for a trolley at the east end, it's going to be the Donner Lake people who are going to lead the charge on whether that is viable or not, or whether it's going to pass muster. And you see the same thing in other areas of the town. If we're going to start putting dense infill housing downtown, people living there will need to be a part of it.
Thanks, Jan. I thought it'd be under three minutes. Sorry. It's all good. Thank you, sir. Anybody else's public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, closing public comment and bringing it back to council. For any comment on either what we heard, on the goals and vision is specifically what staff is looking for, and then any action that you'd like to bring up otherwise that is not pertaining to the goals and vision, but yet might be pertinent to this discussion that you would like to see come back to us at a future agenda item, starting at that end.
I think my, I mean, my only thing really goes back to just making sure we're filling in and having a good representation. So, whatever we can do to help kind of facilitate filling in at least the current seats, I just wanted to make sure we get that done.
Great. Thank you.
I think Jeff and Danielle hear enough from me about this issue, so I'm good.
Councilmember Abrams.
Yeah, I really appreciate all the effort that the G-PAC puts in on this. I haven't been as closely involved, so in looking through it today. I mean, to me, it looks great, and I appreciate it. And I, I don't have anything to change or to add or to input. I do think it makes sense, and it's timely, that with, with kind of the unknown future, that we do have a procedure for canceling meetings. I think that's fair for everyone, especially people who are planning to attend. And then also the vacancy, I think that I, I don't know exactly how to do that, but I think it does make sense to fill it before April.
Yes, as Vice Mayor Clostad said, I'm living it, being on the G-PAC. So, don't have much more to add. I do want to thank the members of the public for their feedback tonight. I think valid concern about the meeting coordination, just to make sure that we have some separation and the ability to get to different meetings as a community. Pat Davison, quick question. You don't have to get up, you can just nod. Non-residential market demand, you were talking about the BAE report? Okay, thank you. Yeah, so that's it for me.
Great.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm interested in, I think the goals, I think the vision, I think all of that lines up, and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into that. I know it's a lot, and I appreciate my fellow councilmembers who serve on those committees. You know, I'm interested in sort of seeing the next stage, really the next six months, come back and really understand what that robust outreach is going to look like personally. I think we talked about it a lot, and sort of, you're starting to paint some pictures, but I guess I'm looking for just a little bit more, you know, direct, you know, what can the public expect, and how can we start to communicate that to the public so they can actually prepare thoughts and how they want to interact with that? I agree with Jan, climate, housing, traffic. You know, that's been sort of what I've been echoing all along, is if we're going to get buy-in to approve a new general plan, we have to have buy-in on these topics from the greater community, not just from a really tight subset of 20 folks who are making time to show up at these meetings. As far as some of the other logistical things, I think they're fairly easy to accomplish. When I look at who's on the G-PAC, and there's nothing stopping a small business owner or having the chamber advocate for somebody to show up. So, to me, it's important, but it's not the end of the world if our time, staff time's being spent on important work. And this just going through every single application to try to find somebody who wants to show up to a bunch of meetings is sort of not the highest priority. I'm okay with that. You know, you're a small business owner, I'm a small business owner, you know, you have other, Andy Keith is a small business owner, Paco's a former small business owner, Chelsea's a small business owner. There's plenty of people who think as small business owners. So, to me, it's not like we should spend a whole ton of time filling a spot just for the sake of it. Whatever direction was given, at least I'm comfortable with continuing on. And small business owners are always welcome to show up at any G-PAC meeting they want. They are all publicly available. So with that, it sounds like you've got the direction that you need, and thank you very much. Moving right along.
What time is it? Oh, we need a break?
Yeah, yeah, five minutes. Let's be pretty tight on that five minutes so we can get the last two agenda items out, and we don't have to postpone any. Thank you for your patience, public. We really appreciate you sticking around.
Okay. Everybody good to go? Item 7.4, Staff Report, West River Site Design Contract Amendment and Update. Hillary?
All right, back at it. The purpose of this next agenda item is to check in on two different topics related to the West River site, and I will go through them briefly. We all know the location. This is on West River Street at Mill Street. At the February 25th council meeting, your council gave staff direction to move forward with the Phase 1 park design, and staff indicated we would bring back a budget amendment to accomplish that. We have that available in your staff report. The budget amendment with Melton Design Group proposed tonight would fund coordination of the project phasing, so dividing it into two projects, one for the park, one for the streetscape, as well as necessary permitting work to complete the park design. The staff report identified the amendment's scope of work as a total of 44,330. We received a late correction on the scope of work from our design consultant, and Melton Design Group has requested to adjust that scope of work for a total of 45,491. That updated scope of work was sent to council as an update, as included, it posted in public comment on the website. So staff is recommending council approve the budget amendment of 45,491 to allow completion of the park design and construction documents. That's the first topic. Now onto the second topic, the streetscape layout and bicycle pedestrian, bicycle and pedestrian circulation. At your February 25th council meeting, staff presented two different design options. At your February 25th council meeting, staff presented two different design options, angled and parallel parking, with angled parking being staff's recommendation. Council discussed that and requested additional options to consider bicycle circulation to and around the site. Since that time, the design team considered additional design options, and I'll briefly walk through three different options we came up with. Melton Design Group also presented a contract amendment for two possible design alternatives. A third design alternative would not require a contract amendment. After that, staff met with Truckee Trails Foundation to review the existing design alternatives, as well as discuss different alternatives that could be looked at that came out of our discussion with Melton. And that initial discussion with the Trails Foundation did not indicate that there is significant support for any of the design alternatives that we had come up with. The design team also did not recommend any of those alternatives. So our recommendation tonight is actually to not amend for that additional scope of work for those alternatives, but I'll briefly walk you through them tonight, so council is aware of them and can direct staff to do additional design work if you would like. Zoom back out, sorry. This is the first design that we presented at last council meeting. This is angled parking design. This is same as what you saw at the last meeting, except that we have indicated the bicycle and pedestrian paths of travel with bicycle lanes in green. The dotted bicycle lane indicates where bicycles would share the traffic lane. Blue indicates a pedestrian path of travel, and the orange area denotes a landscape buffer. That's the area along the edge of the sidewalk where we would have things like street trees, parking meter, kiosks, signs, that sort of thing. So in the angled parking alternative, the Class 2 bike lane would continue along West River Street up until the edge of the park, at the western edge, at which point the Class 2 bike lane would end with bicycles sharing the road to the corner of Mill Street and sharing the road along both sides of Mill Street in order to access the Bridge Landing. We did discuss at the last meeting that the sidewalk is designed to be extra wide so that it could accommodate cyclists if there was a desire to exit off the street onto the sidewalk at that point. We're not suggesting that that would be the primary path of travel in this design, but for families with young children, that sort of thing, that's always an option, and that is legal and trucky. I'll go on to the next one, but I can come back to any of these if there are questions. The second design option, Option B, which we presented at the last council meeting, would replace the angled parking with parallel parking. This does reduce the parking count by 11 spaces. In this case, the Class 2 bike lane could continue along West River Street to the corner of Mill Street, and then bicyclists would share the road along Mill Street and would share the road along West River Street to Bridge Street, and that's due to the width of the roadway in that section. The sidewalks in this scenario have stayed the same as the previous alternative. Now on to the alternatives that we came up with and are not recommending to look at tonight. This first alternative, or actually, the next two alternatives both would widen the street frontage or sidewalk area in order to accommodate separate bicycle and pedestrian lanes. This first alternative would do so along West River Street only, so bicyclists could exit off of the street at a curb cut here. The sidewalk area, which previously was anticipated primarily for pedestrians, would be widened by at least three feet in order to accommodate separate bicycle and pedestrian lanes. Those could be denoted with different types of pavement, or one with cement, one with pavers, that sort of thing, so that there are clearly two different lanes in place. In this alternative, there would be a curb cut at the corner of Mill and West River Street, and cyclists would then exit onto Mill Street and share the lane down Mill Street, which is a much lower traffic volume street. The next alternative is similar to Alternative 2, only in this instance, the sidewalk would be widened along both West River and Mill Street to accommodate separate lanes on those two streets. In this case, you also see this red line at the corner that denotes a wall, a low wall, or other type of landscape feature to help separate bikes and pedestrians as they round that corner. These are some examples of other locations where bicyclists and pedestrians are split the walkway area. This is Stanley Park in Vancouver. You can see two different types of pavers used. Another section of Stanley Park here, you can see that there's signage used to denote pedestrian versus bicycle path of travel, and a low curb to help separate, which could be a type of design we would use at that corner. Canary Row in Monterey, this uses paint to separate different lanes. Another view. The UC Davis campus. And those are our three. The third design alternative considered was to widen pathways through the park. Here we have a sketch of a possible park design. We anticipate we will have pedestrian walkways through the park allowing access to, through the plaza area, and then ramping down towards the river and out towards the bridge. Currently, we are anticipating those to be six-foot width, which would accommodate primarily pedestrians, and then also would be at an accessible grade for wheelchairs, strollers, that sort of thing. In this alternative, we would look at widening those to either eight or 10 feet, eight being the minimum for mixed-use trails, 10 feet being the width of our legacy trail, and that would help encourage and direct bicycle traffic through the center of the park. Just wanted to briefly touch on why none of these three design alternatives are recommended. In discussions with the Trails Foundation, concern with the separate bicycle and pedestrian lanes in the street frontage area is that this would only be applying that type of treatment in a very small part of town, which Jan Holen on the board of the Trails Foundation said is sort of like putting in one roundabout in your town. People aren't quite used to it. They don't really know how to handle it, and I think that's a good analogy. If this were something that we were applying throughout town, that may be a good option, but it just would be an opportunity to cause confusion with the number of visitors we have coming there, and don't anticipate that that would be a great option. With Alternative 3 here, there was concern that directing bicycles through the middle of the park would both detract from the park experience if you have fast-moving cyclists moving through there, and could also lead to more pedestrian-bicycle conflict. So this was not recommended. So this is just an overview of those three design alternatives that I just presented, widening just West River, widening West River in Mill Street frontages, or widening pathways through the park. The two, the first two would require contract amendments. The third would not. And staff's recommendation tonight is to authorize a town manager to execute a contract amendment for the park design work needed, which is 45,491, so we can move forward with the park design. Staff is not recommending the amendments for any of the additional design alternatives, but we do have those available if there's interest in pursuing those. What staff is requesting to do at this time is to not make a decision on the parallel versus angled parking, but keep those as our two design options, allow us to continue additional stakeholder engagement. Right now, we've heard from a number of cyclists and from the Trails Foundation, we'd like to make sure we're hearing all perspectives on this, and also have an opportunity to take advantage of the downtown-specific plan workshop, where we'll be presenting this project and get feedback at that time, and come back at our April 14th meeting with an update on the park design, as well as an updated recommendation, and look for a decision from council at that time on the streetscape design.
I just wanted to underscore, we're not asking council or the community to make the angled versus parallel bike lane versus share-the-road decision, and we feel we made great progress with the Trails Foundation and cyclist folks, but there's some other stakeholders we need to talk to as well, including a bit of the difficulty here. We're not in a position to be able to talk to our two potential commercially interested parties because of the timing that you remember from a month or so ago, and we'll soon be able to do that, but we need to talk to everybody involved before, but we think we can come back to you with a final design that sort of nails it all, but give us a little more time with the stakeholders is what we're asking for.
Great. Thank you. So one of the things you are asking us to chime in on is clearly what's in front of us, and if anybody has a majority or inkling to add any of the other alternatives that Hillary also just provided. So any questions? Again, let's not get into parallel or angled parking. This is specifically about the design, the contract, and the amendment. Councilmember Tierman, anything? No. Abrams? No. Asad? You guys are great. I love 10 o'clock. Opening up for public comment? Anybody have any public comment on this item? On the design amendment, Susie?
Well, I guess, turn my public comment. Susie, turn anything. As a cyclist, you do not want to hear anything about those, parallel versus.
You provided us with public comment ahead of time, so we have all of that. If there's anything to add, please do.
I want to echo the Truckee Trails Foundation. I think the other options are confusing and would create conflict between cyclists and others. I also want to just apologize. My husband was like, "What are you doing this morning?" And I was like, "I'm writing this email about the parking." And he's like, "Oh, well, you should put this in there, and you should put that in there." And I was like, "You should put that in there." And so he did, and then he sent it to me, and I accidentally sent it in when I was trying to give him, so it came in twice, and that's my fault, so I apologize for that. So thank you so much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Susie. We appreciate all comments, not to worry. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, closing public comment and bringing it back to council for any deliberation, additions, or a following of the recommendation in front of us. Please.
Just think of a question. So the park design is going to be coming to us for review, discussion, when, timing on that?
We will bring an update on the design at the April 14th meeting.
So April 14th will be a key meeting for park and streetscape?
Correct.
OK, thank you.
And our only design alternatives really pertain to streetscape. We're not looking at any other park design alternatives. The park design is pretty set. We're going to get what we get with the bowl and everything else.
The general design, which your council gave a direction to move forward with, is set. There will be certainly some sort of finalization of that and details to weigh in on.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Tierman, how about a recommended motion, seeing no other comments?
Yeah, I'll move that we authorize town manager to execute a con, do I have to read all of this, or can we?
Oh, you can say.
The staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
I'm going to reiterate that it is with the amended amount.
Yes.
The recommendation that was in front of us, yes, with the amended amount that was supplied second afterwards.
That is what I seconded.
Yes. Thank you. Andy? You're doing 7.5?
Sure. If we're doing 7.5, I'm doing 7.5.
We are doing it. It's not 11 o'clock yet. That's our hard stop, so there you go. Keep going.
OK. So you are aware that the advent of the California 2019 Building Code at the beginning of the year this year has resulted in a mandate to put solar panels on rooftops of single-family homes and multifamily residential buildings of three stories or less. In the course of looking at the code and talking to the local building community, we've discovered that there are no currently commercially available solar panels that can withstand heavy snow loads. They tend to get crushed. So Dan West, our chief building official, has been working with his counterparts from several other jurisdictions, a few other counties and some cities, trying to find a solution to this, also been working with CAT and the local engineers, I think, to try to find a solution. There are a couple of things that are kind of in the works. One is that they've written to the California Energy Commission and asked if some kind of temporary waiver or something could be granted. The CEC said, "Yeah, we'll consider it," but nothing's happened. Simultaneously, new Assemblymember Dolly reached out to us and said essentially, "Is there anything you need help with?" We said, "Well, maybe the solar panel thing." And then before we knew it, she'd introduced a bill, which is pretty skeletal. It's clearly meant as a placeholder bill. It doesn't have any definitions in it. It's not really fleshed out. And I think what's happened is that her office is waiting to try to move forward on that through the Assembly and then the Senate until they see if they can get new support from us and other affected snow country jurisdictions. So here we are, asking whether you'd like us to send a letter of support, potentially indicating town willingness to sponsor the bill, to Assemblymember Dolly. And I know that we just did have you adopt a legislative platform, but this is an example of the kind of thing that we think that there could be some concern about, perhaps in the dais and perhaps in the community. So we didn't want to just get out ahead of the council and take this one on unilaterally. We thought it was appropriate to bring this back to the full council. So as I mentioned, the current bill is not going to be adopted in its current form. Even if we express support for the bill, there's no chance it moves forward as it is, because it doesn't have any definitions. I think that if the town were to indicate support for the bill and/or sponsorship of the bill, that would get us some traction with Assemblymember Dolly, and would get us a seat at the table in helping to craft what the bill says, which could be a simple exemption of snow country buildings from the solar panel requirement, or it could be that we'd have a chance to work with Assemblymember Dolly to try to find some alternative equivalent that could help save energy or do something else cool that fits within the technological limitations that are on the market right now. So that's what I have.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And bring it, so we don't necessarily, just to clarify, we don't know this, are you looking for the substance of what you think our letter should contain as direction from us this evening?
I'm looking for any guidance the council may wish to provide. So you could tell us to send a letter of support and tell us kind of what you think maybe should be in it in great detail, or you could tell us, send a letter of support and try to get something that would achieve some of our other goals, but not tell us exactly what to say or how to say it, and leave it to us to figure it out, or whatever else you'd like to tell us.
And one possible model is what might, some of the nuances that might be in the bill is essentially contained in the letter that Dan West and his colleagues sent. There's some nuances there about actually, we don't have to be that explicit, but actually defining some numbers and being a little more explicit about potential trade-offs. I think we'd be able to do that pretty easily.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. Questions? I think this is a lot of commentary probably, but if you have any specific questions, go for it.
Yeah, question, so the packet, the staff report included a letter dated January 30th addressed to the California Building Standards Commission from our chief building official. Have we heard a response? And when do we expect to hear a response? And this was signed, this, it looks like six different jurisdictions signed on to this message. So I'm asking, would it be prudent to wait and hear back from them before we take action on supporting a bill?
So I don't know that we have a timetable for any real substantive response from the CBSC. They're aware of the letter, they've received it, they're looking at it. I don't know that any hearings have been set. I don't know that any progress has been made. So we thought it might not be a bad idea to pursue both a kind of administrative solution through them and potentially a legislative solution through Assemblymember Dolly. And if the council does direct us to send a letter, we would reach out to the same jurisdictions that signed that letter to the CBSC and ask for their support and ask them to send their own letters to Assemblymember Dolly.
OK. That was going to be my question. Thank you. If others were going to sign on, or if we were going to try to get others to sign on?
I have it on. I'm, I have it on fairly good authority, the town of Mammoth Lakes and probably Mono County will support the effort as well. It's the only building official I've talked to.
Councilmember Yaromus, any questions? This side? No. Great. Let's open this item to public comment. I applaud you all. Thank you so much. We've never made it to 10:30 with public still in our audience, other than Planning Commissioner Susie Tarnay. So thank you, Susie, but thank you to all of the rest of you too. So come on up. State your name and make sure you fill out a speaker card when you're done and hand it to Judy as well. Thank you.
I'm Paul Outenschlager, and I'm representing the Tahoe Truckee Engineers Association. And our committee wrote a recommendation that formed the basis for Dan West's letter, which is in your packet. It was based on a draft of our recommendation, so there's a little change, so some little changes here, but we're recommending that exemption from the 2019 California Energy Code. Our recommendation is as follows. High snow areas with ground snow loads above 223 pounds per square foot or roof snow loads above 125 pounds per square foot should be exempted from the solar requirement in the Energy Code. And what this means for Truckee is that the higher and the west side areas of Tahoe Donner and the Donner Lake area would be exempt. The whole rest of the town would not be exempt. And mind you, much of that's built out already, so it's not affecting very many buildings. The reason is standard solar panels and rail systems have a maximum snow rating of 125 Above this, there's a couple manufacturers that have specially rated their panels for 178 PSF, pounds per square foot. However, the other components of the PV systems are not robust enough or even tested for these heavier loads. In the past two heavy winters, I've seen failures of panels, standoffs, L feet, panel frames and mounts, and I've seen where entire PV systems were swept off the roofs by sliding snow. To explain this a little better, I would like to give an example. Let's pick a 12-module PV system on a 312 modern, mountain modern roof at a site at a medium elevation in Tahoe Donner with a ground load of 318 PSF or snow load of 178 PSF on the panels. Under full snow, each 19-square-foot module would have seven feet of dense spring snow on it, weighing 3,400 pounds. For a 12-module system, imagine 12 small cars stacked up on the panels wanting to roll down. Standard PV systems are simply not robust enough to withstand these kinds of forces. So, we recommend supporting a letter approving, supporting AB 2066 and maybe participate in its writing. And we also recommend continuing work with the, with the town, a building department, with the other building departments in the work group, continue to work with the CBSC to work out the details. If this exemption doesn't happen, there will be failures of newly installed PV systems that are put in place by architects and engineers that are really not experienced with how to deal with the high snow.
Good evening or morning. I'm Brandon Strong with the local solar installer company. I just wanted to get up here and give a voice to some of the local installers here. What Paul is saying is correct to a point. Their calculations tend to be on the more conservative side, obviously, so we've been installing here for a number of years and have design options that we can use to be able to counteract the effects of the heavy snow. And this specific letter is going, is going to affect new home construction. So if we get to a point where architectural design is involved in, in this process, then we can design the homes to be able to withstand these snow loads and design specific roof plans to be able to take that, that load. That's basically all I had. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Brandon.
I'm Jan Zabriski, a local resident. And what I would like to see the council do and the staff is, in a sense, get it right, do it right. When I say get it right, I mean go back to the agencies that adopted the regulations. When I say do it right, let's protect the environment, which means having an offset as a condition to the exemption. If we're going to allow greater greenhouse gases to be admitted by providing for the exemption, let's propose a way to offset those increased emissions. Now, the first of at least 24 public workshops were held on the Building Energy Efficiency Standards beginning back in May of 2016. The formal comment period began in February of 2018. The standards were adopted in May of 2018 with an effective date of January 2020. It wasn't until the end of this last January, January 30, that a letter finally went to the Building Standards Commission about the problem with the solar panels. So, it's really been a number of years before anybody's done anything to try and ring the bell down in Sacramento. Now next, these are regulations, not statutes. They were adopted by the agencies that specialize in energy efficiency. State utilities were involved, the building industry of the state, Building Industry Association was involved, the state legislature was not involved. The letter was carefully crafted, the one that went out in January 30th that was signed by the staff for Truckee. In comparison, AB 2066 doesn't provide anything. It reflects a lack of knowledge on the part of the assembly member. The town council should not be sponsoring or endorsing a letter that is contrary to the town's goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions unless the assembly member is ready to show us a bill that complies and conforms with our goals. Obviously, the better, better thing to do is let the state agencies work it out. This was not just some incidental request for an informal waiver. There is a statutory provision that this letter followed. I assume there was also a petition, formal form petition. It's a one-page petition that they file. There is a set period of time that governs the review of those things. You can ask for urgency adoption of a regulation. So that's where we need to go. It's to the agencies, get it correct, don't have the legislature doing an end run around us, creating a bill that we don't know what is it going to provide. Thank you.
Thanks, Jan.
Thanks, guys. I think I may be the last one for all night. I looked through the report. I'm not sure if I understood. It looked like the whole town was being exempted, but it sounded like he was saying it was not the whole town. Either way, I just want to say I do have solar panels on my house, and they've been there five or six years now, and obviously, like our front deck, we don't let 12 cars pile up worth of snow on top. You have to clean it off occasionally with that big hoe thing. So our solar panels work and they are doing fine, knock on wood, but if we do go for the exemption, I would really ask that we try and find an equivalent alternative to offset that somehow. Thank you.
Thanks, Susie.
Good evening again, Mayor Polovy, members of the council, Pat Davison with the Contractors Association. Our members came together at the end of last week and put together a letter that should have been received yesterday, not at the last minute, but actually yesterday. And we are supporting the drafting of a letter to go to Assemblymember Dolly. We do think there's value in discussing the exemption and have requested that we're involved in drafting of a letter. However, I do want to make it clear here tonight, for the record, that none of us in our association are asking to be off the hook. We understand that there would be alternative mitigation required for those exempted properties. So, hope that helps understand what's going on here. We do support the two-track process, legislative as well as the administrative. So happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Seeing no other public comment, I will close public comment on this agenda item and bring it back for council discussion and, and maybe just kick us off quickly and everybody can sort of take it from there, but I'm, I'm fine with putting in a legislative track to this. I do believe the alternative equivalent has to be included, and that is deterministic of actually our signing on. And, you know, I was open to even some sort of, if it's not, an alternative equivalent could also simply be money into some sort of GHD reduction fund or, or something along like the Inclusionary Housing Fund was something that I was thinking of. But that would be our only, that, those would be our conditions for signing on to the legislation, and, and I would be opposed. I was reading the last on page two of the letter, just above this, sincerely, individual jurisdictions could, at their discretion, adopt offsetting energy efficiency requirements for those sites or buildings that would be granted this section. I would say if we're going to go the legislative route, I would delete the "at their discretion" from our, from our action. So, looking around for either agreement or, or edits to that. Vice Mayor Klosstad, go.
It's actually pretty surprising to me that the California Building Standards Commission didn't take this into consideration as they were developing this, knowing that we have high snow load areas in the state of California. Given that, I'm, I'm a rule follower person, and especially when it comes to building codes, I don't really want legislation overriding those. But, and at the same time, I also, I, I want solar panels in our community. We did have a very good discussion, I think, not long ago about the fact that these areas tend to be, the areas of the high snow load all tend to be in the Truckee Donner PUD utility area, so we're kind of doing solar on top of renewable. There's minimum, you know, probably a reduction of benefits there. Whatever we do, I'm in complete support of that, of your statement and CAT's statement, and I think most of the people up here support that we have to have the equivalent alternative. I would much prefer to see the path achieved of working with the California Building Standards Commission. If they are non-responsive or we do, or we see a dead end in that, then of course, we take, I, I would like to see us pursue other alternatives with Assemblymember Dolly. But ideally, this should be resolved where it began, which is in the California Building Standards Commission.
One nuance is the Standards Commission, as we understand it, actually deferred to the CEC, the California Energy Commission, since it's an Energy Code issue that would then bounce back to the building code. So there's some, there's two, actually two agencies involved, which is, you know, part of the concern that it could take a while.
Challenge, additional challenges.
Yeah, but we have done exactly as Jan Zabriski suggested. We filled out the form, and Dan West and his colleagues, you know, did everything right to get it into the queue.
I'll say that, you know, I mean, quite honestly, it's, I think, more pressure, doesn't matter where it's coming from, this is a small group of people who are affected by this, so for, basically Sacramento, to, to change or adjust or listen or hear is going to take more pressure. So I think there's nothing wrong with having an administrative side and a legislative side and.
I, I agree, yeah. I think it's important to have an alternative option, but I'm fine with sending the letter.
Yeah, I think I'm probably most aligned with what Vice Mayor Klosstad said. In this room, back in the fall, there was a building code sort of primer for the construction, design professional community. It wasn't just about producing energy or renewable energy, but it was also, you know, looking, pushing ways to, to improve insulation, the energy efficiency and other, other ways. That said, I, I support the, the mandate across our state for, for solar. Yes, we do have unique circumstance here with our snow loads, but I, I, I would like to see this, this play out with the, with the CEC and the California Building Standards Commission. At least in my line of work, when, when I don't get an answer to a letter, I pick up the phone and call and start finding out what's going on. And I think we can do that here. We've got six jurisdictions all asking the same thing. I, I agree, you know, as well, why not, you know, start to think about putting pressure in other areas to, to get this exemption, but again, with all of the caveats that I think you all have articulated, that let's also think about alternative equivalents in, in instances where renewable solar panels are not feasible because of snow loads.
So were you in favor of sending this letter?
I'm in favor of getting, getting a response, seeing if we can push for that. Doesn't mean we can't draft, you know, start drafting or thinking about it, but ultimately, would this letter be coming back to us, or would it just?
We're authorizing a letter.
Authorizing it.
We're either authorizing it or not.
Yeah.
Right now.
Yeah.
And we can table it, and it can come back in a couple weeks after.
Yeah, you can wait. And we can, we can wait and, and have Dan and his colleagues make a couple phone calls and see where we are and bring it back. It's not. We may get this resolved through, through, through this, this pathway, but without the legislative.
Yeah, one question and one thought. The question is, how long would you like to wait to see if we get an answer? And the thought is that a compromise position between us just sending the letter out and bring it back to the council is we could bring it back to the legislative committee and see if the legislative committee is comfortable with whatever we come up with for a letter.
That's a great compromise, Andy.
That sounds good. And, and how long to wait? I mean, it's already been a month.
Couple weeks.
You know, January 30th, we're now March 10. That's long enough, but if we can get an answer by the end of March from, from this, from this commission, but.
So, I mean, I think a motion will be made at some point, but is your suggestion then that we, we should wait three weeks and then send the letter if no satisfactory answer has been forthcoming?
I guess what I'm asking is if we get this resolved at this level, do we need legislative action then?
No, no, we don't. I'm only trying to understand the timing.
So, so I guess what I'm suggesting is try, see if we can get an answer this month, by the end of the month, and if we don't, then we go the other course with the letter.
Mayor, I mean, I don't underst, but I, I think, I don't see the problem with just, just move forward and just get both going, and I totally agree, find out, make the phone calls, but why, why stop this? There's still people who are in planning, they're trying to get building as they submit their plans and go through, and there's other people waiting, and so just delaying it doesn't really solve a lot of other people's problems, so I don't, there's not really any harm, is there? Am I missing something?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just saying 20 more days. We're already well into 2020. The code just took effect. If, if we can get resolution through, through the, this channel, great.
I agree. I mean, I agree, I'd rather get resolution, absolutely. I'm just saying, don't know why the reason to slow down, this is push from both sides.
I have one other thought that I might offer, and that is that if the California Energy Commission becomes aware that there's a, a real legislative effort to take this out of their hands, it might get their attention. So we might actually create leverage with the CEC by pursuing a legislative solution, and if we get what we need from the CEC, we could certainly tell Assemblymember Dolly that the matter's been resolved and the legislation could be withdrawn.
And I would, and I would be comfortable maybe with authorizing this tonight with the caveat that it comes back to legislative committee for a quick review, which is the mayor and the vice mayor, just prior to it, before it gets sent off, just to give everybody comfort that there's, you know, another set of eyes on it if we want to hang, wait, or there's maybe some phone calls going back and forth, we, we can provide staff with, with that, you know, direction, and then we kind of move that forward on.
I'd be good.
Two fronts.
Sounds good.
Does that work as a compromise for everybody?
Yep.
Great. Councilmember Tierman, T S up. That's what you get. That's what you get when you're the last one to speak, so, you know. In case you guys haven't figured it out yet.
All right. So what are we—so we are—
7.5.
Yeah, 7.5, authorizing town staff to prepare for the mayor's signature letter. Why don't I just move the recommendation here, and it'll come back to the Legislative Committee for review and anyone else who wants to review it. I take it.
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that back to us, and I appreciate the heightened awareness behind that issue. And also, considering we had a ton of public comment on it. So that was great. Thank you. Councilmember Comendatore.
I'll make a quick—apologize for missing last week— or last—two weeks ago, last meeting due to illness. I'm bouncing back. And the only thing at the report is I attended the— for the first time ever, at the Cocktail Bingo downtown last weekend. Very, very interesting, a lot of fun. It was a new experience for me and my longtime—I've been here, so exciting.
Saw the photos, by the way.
All right.
I'm in charge here. Vice—Vice Mayor Klobstad.
I attended another Truckee Springs Committee, and we're planning some informational sessions in the near future, which will be small gatherings. So hopefully, we don't have to cancel them due to our COVID-19 issue. We had another GPAC meeting where we did our final deep dive visioning into the last three areas of Truckee. We already heard a little bit about that tonight. It was very productive. And then I got out and enjoyed living in Truckee.
Councilmember Abrams.
I have no reports.
And Councilmember Tierman?
Same as Vice Mayor Klobstad, attended the GPAC on February 27th. And then right after that, headed over to the Truckee Donner Park and Rec District for their board meeting. They had an agenda item on the library and an MOU with the district regarding the site at the park. And they approved that unanimously.[1738.53]